As the mayor of the town of Clayton, I'd like to call this Clayton Town Council meeting to order. Ask you to stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in my heart.
Let us pray. Most gracious and heavenly father, we thank you so much for the many blessings of this day, and we ask, Lord, now that you be with us as we proceed with the business for the town of Clayton. For it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We would like to add under 5D National Gun Violence Awareness Day proclamation, as well as under 11A, a closed session.
All right, I got those noted on our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agendas presented.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next is your consent agenda.
Move we approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next, under introductions and special presentations, I have a series of proclamations. The first one will be Celebrate Elected Officials Day proclamation, and I'll turn it over to Rich Capola.
Excuse me. Mr. Mayor, council, very often you guys are up there celebrating the great work that gets done by a lot of your town staff, some of which you'll get to talk about here tonight, but it's not often we get an opportunity to celebrate you all as our elected officials. This Friday, the 19th, is Elected Officials Day, and frankly, our system of government would not work without the great leadership and vision that is provided from folks at your level, particularly here at local government where our core services that we provide every day are really the lifeblood of what makes this community go. So we just want to take an opportunity this year to go ahead and celebrate you on Friday, and thank you for your service. I know a lot of you spend a lot of time reading through these very long agendas sometimes and attending many of the events here throughout the community, but it is not without notice, and we do appreciate everything you do. So we just wanted to take an opportunity to say thank you and celebrate you on Friday.
Awesome. Thank you. Town of Clayton, Elected Officials Day proclamation. Whereas elected officials include city council members, mayors, governors, members of state legislatures, senators, representatives of the United States Congress, and even the President of the United States. And whereas they have occupied powerful positions in government because they have been voted in, and whereas our elected officials work to enhance the quality of life in the town of Clayton by listening to and valuing the needs of all citizens, and whereas it is on this day we recognize our elected officials of the town of Clayton, Mayor Jody McLeod, Mayor Pro Tem Jason Thompson, council member Andrea Archer, council member Porter Casey, council member Avery Everett, and council member Michael Sims. And now therefore, the town of Clayton Town Council hereby proclaim May 19th, 2023 as Elected Officials Day in the town of Clayton, and citizens are encouraged to express your appreciation to these officials proclaimed this 15th day of May 2023. And on behalf of the town of Clayton, I would like to thank all of you for your service to our great town and the great work and time that you put into what you do. And at this time, I would like to ask you to join me by the seal for a quick photograph. And y'all thought y'all were in here just to provide security for us. Town of Clayton National Police Week proclamation. Whereas there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Clayton Police Department. Whereas since the first recorded death in 1786, more than 23,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and have been killed in the line of duty, including Patrol Officer Charles Lee, Patrol Officer Ray Gilmore, and Lieutenant Monica Carey, who were honorably served as members of the Clayton Police Department. And whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. And whereas 556 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 224 officers killed in 2022 and 332 officers killed in previous years. And whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 35th Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 13th, 2023. And whereas May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and the United States flag should be flown at half-staff. Now therefore, on behalf of the town council, of the Clayton Town Council, I, Jody McLeod, Mayor of the town of Clayton, observe May 14th through May 20th, 2023 as National Police Week and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation, proclaim this 15th day of May 2023. And on behalf of the town of Clayton and the citizens of the town of Clayton, I want to express our deepest and most sincere appreciation for the job that you all do every single day for the town of Clayton. Your commitment and dedication is unwavering. We see it every day. We experience it every day. The appreciation level for the law enforcement that we have in Clayton is tremendous, and we are honored to honor you this evening. Thank you, and let's have a nice round of applause for our police department. And I'm going to ask you to join me up front, and let's get a picture.
So the chair says the only way you want to release crap. [laughter] All right, we got a couple more. There we go. All right. Perfect. Thanks, guys.
Up next will be the National Public Works Week proclamation.
Mayor, council, Byron Pullman, interim Public Works Director. We do appreciate the opportunity to recognize our public work staff and the hard work that they do. We appreciate the ones that've come out to be recognized tonight. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Town of Clayton Public Works Week, Connecting the World Through Public Works proclamation. Whereas the town of Clayton provides electricity to its citizens, and whereas the citizens of the town of Clayton are customers and owners of their public power system and exercise local control over utility operations and policies. And whereas our employees are neighbors, serving neighbors, and whereas our electric system is a community asset that contributes to the well-being of citizens by providing safe and reliable power, customer service, and economic development opportunities. And whereas the town of Clayton is one of more than 70 public power communities, serving more than 500,000 residential, commercial, and industrial customers in North Carolina. And now therefore, we, on behalf of the Clayton Town Council, I, Jody McLeod, do proclaim that May 21st through 27th, 2023, to be recognized as Public Works Week, Connecting the World Through Public Works, to promote public power and recognize those who work to provide the best possible electric service for our citizens, proclaim this 15th day of May 2023 while in regular sessions. Thank you so much for all you do to keep the lights on. You guys are amazing. We thank all of you. And if you'll join me down front, we'd like to get a photograph made. [applause] All right, and last, but certainly not least, is the National Gun Violence Awareness Day proclamation. 2023 Town Proclamation declaring the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. This proclamation declares the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the town of Clayton, to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence, and to declare that we as a country must do more to end the public health crisis. Whereas every day, more than 120 Americans are killed by gun violence, and more than 200 are shot and wounded, with an average of more than 17,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas North Carolina has 1,588 gun deaths every year, with a rate of 14.9 deaths per 100,000 people, a crisis that costs the state $19.5 billion each year, North Carolina has the 23rd highest rate of gun deaths in the United States. Whereas protecting public safety and the communities they serve is the mayor's highest responsibility, and whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizen goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. Whereas by wearing orange on June 2nd, 2023, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violent victims and survivors. Now therefore, on behalf of the town of Clayton, I, Mayor Jody McLeod, declare the first Friday of June, June 2nd, 2023, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. I encourage all citizens to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives, proclaim this 15th day of May 2023. And I will present this to... Okay, I will present this to the clerk, and we will allow her to get that to the appropriate parties. All right. Thank you. Now we'll begin a series of public hearings. The first public hearing is 2022-154 River Mews Conditional Zoning District and Master Plan, and I'll give the floor to Planning Director Ben Howell.
So tonight, we have the request for a conditional rezoning and master plan of approximately 277 acres on NC Highway 42 East near the Neuse River, known as River Mews. And the request is to rezone the properties from planned development residential to conditional zoning residential, which would allow up to 825 units, in a mixture of single-family homes, townhomes, multifamily with an assembly or event center at a density of approximately three units per acre. On your screen there is a proposed master plan with the event center at the very top on the river, right there in the red, and then the different colors representing the different townhomes, single-family homes, and apartments. As mentioned, the proposed is a mixture of residential uses with one non-residential use as the assembly use. The property is in the watershed overlay, and it's approximately 277 acres at a proposed density of three units an acre. There are actually going to be three proposed access points on NC 42, two access points open to the public, and a third emergency access point to meet the Town of Clayton Unified Development Code. Water and sewer will be provided by the town of Clayton, and at this time, the plan is for electric to also be provided by the town of Clayton. And it's surrounded by primarily single-family residential with the Glen Laurel mixed-use area across the street, just a ways. The proposed unit mix at this time is 240 multifamily units, 246 single-family homes, and 339 townhomes. The dimensional standards for these are on your screen. And the proposed transportation improvements, the proposed development is expected to generate over 6,700 total trips, with 474 occurring in the AMP cower and 607 occurring in the PMP cower, with the two access points on NC 42 East. DOT has reviewed the TIA and recommend right-turn lanes at both entrances, as well as continuing monitoring for a signal at the U-turn between the two entrances located on 42, as well as extending the storage for the Castleberry left-turn lane on 42. The project will comply with the Town of Clayton Stormwater Ordinance and meets the requirements for the watershed overlay. Public water is available on 42 East, and public sewer will connect to an existing dry sewer line near the development, and electric service at this time does appear to be available. The development will provide a 15-foot wide type-C landscaping buffer. An existing vegetation along the Neuse River shall be preserved and counted as the buffer on that side, with interior landscaping meeting the Unified Development Code requirements. The architectural standards, they've provided quite a few. I will not read through every one that's on your screen, but ultimately, they're planning to provide a mixture of home sizes. They will... All the residential building front exteriors will be fiber cement, brick, and/or stone material, with vinyl being limited to the side or rear. They are requiring pitched roofs and other architectural standards you can see here. Conditional zoning district criteria, the proposed development is consistent with 2045 growth plan in terms of density at roughly three units an acre. However, the growth plan does not speak to apartments in this area, and so in that part of the growth plan, they're not consistent. The current zoning of the property is planned development residential. It's surrounded by industrial residential mixed-use development. It is in the watershed overlay, and 42 has recently been widened to four lanes along the development frontage, so staff does believe the property may be suitable for the proposed development. And the proposed development would provide a mix of housing and density, as well as provide the proposed assembly use that does not currently exist in the area. The development would be served by East Clayton Elementary, Riverwood Middle, and Clayton High School. Of those, Clayton High School is the only one currently on the CAP schools list for Johnston County. The development will be accessed by NC 42 East and is nearby East Clayton Community Park on Glen Laurel Road. The developer is proposing dedication of land for a new park along the river in the development as well. The development's proposed to be served by extension of existing dry sewer line and existing downstream pump stations for wastewater, and is subject to the town wastewater allocation policy. Public water is available on NC 42, and the development will follow the town stormwater ordinance, and all town ordinances, procedures, and approvals will be followed. With the 15-foot landscape buffer with opaque screening and improvements to the existing public road network connectivity and public utility extensions, staff believes that will mitigate any adverse impacts on adjoining property owners, and with the imposed conditions, no detriment is expected to the general public. Staff believes that could admit the criteria for a master plan approval through the master plan, master plan narrative, and the proposed conditions. Considerations for Town Council, the Town Council shall consider recommendation of Planning Board and Planning Director, and shall adopt a written statement of reasonableness and consistency. The council shall approve, approve with conditions, or deny the conditional zoning district. Any conditions that are added, removed, or changed must be agreed to by the applicant prior to the council decision, and the conditional zoning district master plan and narrative will be recorded with Johnston County if approved and run with the land, do not expire. Staff recommends approval of the conditional zoning district subject to the... Sorry, this staff recommendation was from the Planning Board meeting. It's now 27 conditions, and the condition 20 has been revised following Planning Board meeting addressing the transportation requirements. The Planning Board, during their discussion, they did discuss some concerns about the number of access points for the development, and questioned whether canoe or kayak launch could be constructed on the proposed land to be dedicated to the town for parkland. In addition, a representative for Caterpillar and adjoining landowner voiced concerns about future residents and requested that the developer coordinate with CAT on increasing landscaping and/or buffering along the shared property line. Conditions 24, 25, and 26 were added following the Planning Board meeting to address these concerns, and the Planning Board unanimously recommended approval of the proposed conditional zoning district. To that point, I do want to point out that a representative of Caterpillar did send an email late this evening, just before the meeting. I have made copies, and those should be at your seats, with a recommendation for changing one of the conditions that you may wish to discuss with the applicant when they come up to present. The recommended conditions of approval, the first three on the screen are the standard conditions that we have. Condition four is related to the uses that are permitted by right within the areas on the master plan. Condition five addresses supplementary use standards for the event venue. Condition six addresses the number of units and the split of those units, as well as the limitations on the size of the assembly use, as well as the potential use of that area as bed and breakfast or hotel motel use. And the condition six also includes statement that the Planning Director may administratively approve up to a 10% modification to the mix of residential units through an administrative amendment. This is standard language that's in our code as well. The single... Condition seven's relating to the dimensional standards for single-family dwelling lots. Condition eight is related to the dimensional standards for the townhome lots. And condition nine is the maximum building height for the multifamily buildings. Condition 10 relates to the developer's right to provide additional private trails in the development. Condition 11's requirement for construction of a pool and clubhouse to serve all or a portion of the development prior to the issuance of the 375th building permit. Condition 12 is related to the construction of additional amenities, either on HOA land or on the land that is requested to be dedicated to the town. Condition 13 is related to exemption from the cul-de-sac length in our code that they can get if they get approval from the fire code official. Condition 14 is a requirement to include a public greenway or trail generally located along the Neuse River frontage, providing future connection to the property to the west, currently in back Caterpillar. Where possible, the development shall include private connections from the development to the public greenway trail. This trail, when provided, would also ultimately be part of both the East Coast Greenway and the Mountains to Sea Trail. Condition 15's related to the requirement for a development agreement, which will be coming to you at your first meeting in June. And condition 16 is the requirement to confirm that there's adequate capacity in the wastewater Condition 17 is the architectural standards for the single-family homes and townhomes. Condition 18 is architectural standards for the non-residential multifamily development portions. And condition 19 is a condition to allow a private two-way gravel drive to be permitted as an additional means of access for the event venue. Condition 20 is the condition that covers the TIA improvements, the improvements at the two-site drive Condition 12 is related to the construction of additional amenities either on HOA land or on the land that is requested to be dedicated to the town. Condition 13 is related to exemption from the cul-de-sac length in our code that they can get if they get approval from the fire code official. Condition 14 is a requirement to include a public greenway or trail generally located along the Neuse River frontage, providing future connection to the property to the west currently in back Caterpillar. Where possible, the development shall include private connections from the development to the public greenway trail. This trail, when provided, would also ultimately be part of the, both the East Coast Greenway and the Mountains to Sea Trail. Condition 15's related to the requirement for a development agreement, which is, will be coming to you at your first meeting in June. And condition 16 is the requirement to confirm that there's adequate capacity in the wastewater Condition 17 is architectural standards for the single-family homes and townhomes. Condition 18 is architectural standards for the non-residential multifamily development portions, and condition 19 is a condition to allow a private two-way gravel drive to be permitted as an additional means of access for the event venue. Condition 20 is the condition that covers the TIA improvements, the improvements at the two-site driveways, the monitoring of a signal for the U-turn, as well as extending of the left turn storage at Castleberry Road. Condition 21, it would allow for townhomes to front on public, on open space, especially up by the river. And condition 22 is a requirement for the 15-foot class C perimeter buffer. Condition 23 is specific standards relating to parking for the event center of assembly use. I will point out here in this condition, they are requested, that they're requesting to be able to use grass parking as well as count on-street parking towards their off-street parking requirement for the event venue. Condition 24 is relating to requirement to meet with Caterpillar to discuss and coordinate buffering and treatment of owner's shared property boundary. Condition 25 is an allowance to remove stub outs to the Caterpillar property if, if deemed necessary. Condition 26 is the requirement for the third access point that will be an emergency-only access. And condition 27 is a standard town condition regarding any conflict between the master plan, master plan narrative and the conditions. And finally, on the screen is the recommended statement of consistency and reasonableness. You also have this statement in your agenda packet. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Any questions for staff? Mr. Sims?
Ben, could you explain to me, just from my knowledge to understand, when you say monitoring for a signal, what does that look like?
So, sorry, that was based on a DOT recommendation, and that language was proposed by the applicant. As the language is currently written, it would be just that, really monitoring the, that area in coordination with the town and DOT. Essentially, what the town would, what we as staff would look at is if it looks like that U-turn is starting to back up, we would ask them to conduct a signal warrant analysis for that U-turn, and then if it was warranted, we would enter into discussions with them for funding that signal. As the condition is currently worded, proposed by the applicant, that is, it is, it has a lot of loopholes, and it's maybe difficult to enforce.
So, I'm not expecting no exact number or anything like that, just really roughly. So, if there was getting backed up, the process, how long would it take for, possibly for a signal? Would it be months, years?
The signal warrant analysis itself would be, would probably take a couple of months to conduct and get everything in and approved by NC DOT, and then as far as the construction of the signal itself, that likely is probably six months to a year timeframe from the time of beginning the design of it to getting it in place and operational.
One more quick question. So, the 825 units, that's based off of the whole, the, well, the density of three is based off of the whole 277 acres?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Case?
I have a few questions. So, Ben, you said this is a planned development, is that correct?
Say that one more time.
Originally, this was a planned development site.
Yes, yeah, the current zoning is planned development residential.
Okay, so, I mean, I understand the site, and I guess the history behind it. Was there anything ever proposed to where it was a planned development site originally years ago that you know of?
That I'm not aware of. When, previously, when we had looked through our files, we could not find anything on the previously proposed planned development.
Okay, I know we've heard some other conditional zonings that were prior planned development. My next question is, just my understanding, this project is in the watershed overlay district. You spoke on that briefly. I mean, how do we as a town, I guess, make sure that those, the requirements in the watershed overlay district are being met by us and also the state?
So, the way the, the way the watershed protection ordinance is written, and this is actually down even from the state rules and the state model ordinance, is that for residential and non-residential developments, they're limited to 24% impervious unless they are providing stormwater quality control measures, which our stormwater ordinance requires them to provide that anyways. And so, in that case, they can take advantage of what the state calls a high-density option, which allow, which does not restrict the, the density number, it restricts them to 70% impervious, and they are, this development is proposing 60% impervious.
Okay, thank you. And I assume as they're go through the process and there's a grading plan and all the stormwater plans, this is all going to be hashed out in that process?
Yes, yeah, all that would be reviewed and confirmed during the construction drawing review.
Okay. Next question, for the single-family detached, I'm trying to understand the driveway lengths because I see in the, in the applicant packet, it was 20, 20-foot rear loaded driveways. I just, obviously, my concern is cars, a big SUV, maybe, you know, longer than 20 feet. Can you, can speak to that?
So, I will say, we generally have been approving, in conditional zoning districts, have been approving rear-loaded units to have a shorter driveway length, partly because generally those units do access onto private rightway or private alleys, and it's generally not considered as much of a concern. Front-loaded units, we do have the requirement that they have 25 feet of space between the rightway and the front wall of the garage, and that is to ensure that cars, when they're parked in the driveway, do not ever hang into the rightway.
Okay, and I imagine this is going to go through the review of the fire department and, I guess, through the, okay. Next question is, can you explain the note regarding the townhomes? It says, "Front-loaded townhomes shall be exempt from the requirements requiring garages that do not exceed 50% of the front facade, 21 width." I was trying to, trying to understand, wrapping my head around that one.
So, in our code in Article 3, we have design requirements for townhomes where the door to the garage cannot be more than 50% of the width of the total townhome unit, and so they are requesting to be exempted from that, and that is one of the standards that they can request to modify through the conditional zoning process.
Next, I like the idea of, or the possibility of a canoe or kayak park. I mean, obviously, I think that's something that needs to be discussed with Parks and Rec Department and maybe their advisory board. Is that something that we have to act upon tonight? If, or is that something we can kind of put a filler out there for, to be decided later?
That is something that does not necessarily have to be decided tonight, although I believe we do have a condition related to that, so we would need to look at modifying that condition if the council were, were looking to potentially not accept that dedication. I was looking, actually, we may not, that may just be in the development agreement, so we, we should have the ability, there is the ability to discuss that further. Yeah, there is ability to discuss that further if need be.
Okay, I know that we had talked originally, I guess, a couple months ago, several months ago, about there being a kayak park off of, what, Castleberry Road or something like that, so I mean, if we do that in lieu of this or whatever, I just wanted to.
And to that point, I will say, I did follow up with Adrian O'Neil of the County Parks and Recreation Department following the Planning Board meeting, and he did say that from his point of view, from the county side, they do not have a preference or about whether, about which side of the river the canoe kayak launch is on. They certainly, they obviously have the land on the Castleberry side, but he did not have a problem if the town wanted to move the proposed canoe kayak launch onto the other side of the river.
Okay, thank you. And then Councilman Sims brought up the triggering of a stoplight. You mentioned something about loopholes. Do we need to revisit that condition then, or is it, feel like it's adequately addressed? Or how do we need to go about?
That is one I would recommend the council may want to discuss further with the applicant tonight and see if there's some more detail, some more determinative thresholds to put in place to ensure that the signal is warranted at a proper time and that there's a requirement that it be constructed by the applicant prior to completing the development, if it's warranted.
Thank you. Last question, or just wanted to just, can you reiterate or can you rehash? You said something about on the comp plan, I guess, it meets the comp plan except you said the density requirement of the townhomes is 25% typically?
Correct. So, the comp, the comprehensive plan as currently written is, requires a, or calls for a maximum density of three units per acre in this area with, I believe it's up to 20, or no more than 25% attached units, and it does not speak to multifamily or apartments at all in this classification. So, that is where this development is not necessarily in compliance with the growth plan, the percentage of attached units and the apartments.
Okay, I don't have any more questions. Thanks.
Any other questions for staff? Ms. Arce?
Thank you, Ben. Are you aware of any pending applications on any adjoining parcels at this time?
Not at this time.
And did you say there was a copy up here of the most recent letter from Caterpillar?
Yes, I provided a copy of the letter from May 12th, as well as an email that was received this evening.
I just don't see the email up here, so does the clerk have those?
The clerk has those.
Ah, thank you so much.
After giving that a quick glimpse, I believe they are the same. So, what you have received via email is just a copy of the letter that you have submitted.
The email was new. The email was new tonight because they did, the representative from Caterpillar did provide some different wording for the condition.
Let's see, so is that up here? I'm sorry, because I don't have a copy of it.
Pass those out.
Okay. So, obviously, condition number 24 as it is in the packet is vague. I think that came out of the Planning Board, and understandably, that was kind of the best we could do with, with their recommendation. Say we were to approve condition 24 as it was worded tonight, could buffer requirements be addressed in the developers' agreement, or is that something that really needs to be specifically a condition?
The buffer requirements could be addressed in the development agreement. I'll defer to our attorney as well, but, you know, I mean, in these things, it's always better to have it as a condition, just because that's really what we're going to look at, but I believe it could be addressed in the development agreement if need be.
Anyone else? All right, thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
This has been noted as a public hearing. I'll now open the public hearing, and anyone wishing to speak, please step forward and state your name for the record.
My name is Joey Brim. I'm here representing Golden Hour Collective. I'm joined by my colleagues Danny Perkins and Drew Levine, and also McAdams, David Biermark, Ryan Akers, and Nape Queen. I want to thank the council for letting us be up here today to share our vision and collaborate on this wonderful project that we've been working on for the better part of a year. I want to thank the Planning Board for our previous meeting, for giving us their unanimous support for this project. It's good to see that the folks that represent the community are on board with our vision and what we're looking to accomplish. I'd also like to thank the city staff, especially Ben Howell. You've been extremely supportive and responsive throughout this process. It allowed us to get here today with a clear, clear vision, so. We as a team, we have a handful of progress going on in the Carolinas. I can truly say we're the most excited about this project for a multitude of reasons. One, obviously, the site is beautiful, but two, we love what's happening in Clayton and Johnston County. You guys as a, as a staff and a council have provided a safe community with excellent schools, a business-friendly environment, and these are all qualities that offer a strong appeal to live in Clayton, and we want to partake in the future growth of the community by providing exceptional housing for years to come. The site itself, as you can see in the photos, is breathtaking. It's filled with vast open space, creeks, streams, and of course, bordering the Neuse River. When we first visited the site, we were in awe of its natural beauty, and it was clear, our mission became clear immediately, that we need to preserve, showcase the existing surroundings by incorporating the open space and network of walking trails, biking trails, fostering a great resident experience that integrates with the landscape. How did we do this? We strategically placed homes in the best areas possible. We placed homes along creeks, streams, and open spaces, allowing for a picturesque and unique backyard experience, backyard experience for the majority of the residents. With that being said, the previous owner had removed some, some large streams within the site. We've been diligently working with the Army Corps and DWR to restore these streams. Although this endeavor is necessary and costly, it will allow an opportunity to place additional homes along these streams, creating for a better overall experience. We also feel have done a good job with creating community separation. We talked earlier about multiple pods being multifamily, townhome, and single-family. Our goal is to separate these strategically so that if you're inside the multifamily pod, you feel like you're there, if you feel like you're in the single-family home community, you're in your own community there, and of course, obviously, the townhomes as well. Each neighborhood, it's important for us to feel unique to get, to feel unique to one another, most notably the single-family neighborhoods. David will touch on this, but the site will be rich in amenities. We'll have three separate clubhouses, including pool, fitness, and saunas. We'll incorporate walking trails, which are strategically placed to enhance walkability. We'll have pet-friendly open parks, pocket parks, and hopefully, a really cool shared open space with the city, which we'll touch on later. I also want to mention that our team internally is constantly always scouring and tracking the nation for the best trends when it comes to amenities and it comes to master plan communities. We want to always be sure that we provide the latest and greatest for our residents. Arguably, one of the most unique qualities of the site is the existing buildings. This is what we're going to actually put as the event space. There's been some talks about, potentially, this could be a bed and breakfast, an overnight stay facility, but at the end of the day, we do see this really dialed into more of a wedding venue and event space for corporate events. It obviously sits along the Neuse River. It's a beautiful landscape, it's extremely picturesque, and we think that if we can incorporate the natural beauty in this area, we can provide a really unique experience for not only the residents of Clayton, but for people outside in the triangle to come in and experience a great wedding experience. There's a couple, just wanted to show, we're all over here. All good. I think it's 20, 25. Here we go. This is inspiration, kind of our, our vision of how we want to make this look and feel. We thought it'd be important to share today to show you guys our vision with the event Moving on to the city park, I know was talked about earlier. We've had a lot of back and forth with the city on this, and we originally proposed potentially 13 acres. Then there was talks to maybe take all of the open green space along the Neuse River, which would be approximately 50 acres, and we think that if we can collaborate with the city and sit down and talk about how we can work together on this park, we can make something really special. We're happy to provide amenities. We've talked about providing pickleball courts. The kayak launch was brought up earlier. It's currently pegged to be on the other side of the river. We'd love to bring it back to this side to further enhance the park experience. There's ample potential moving forward with the potential mountain-to-sea trail, providing walkability into the town, and of course, the vast open space east of the, of where the amenities would be, would be just an incredible experience, we think, for not only our residents, but also the surrounding community to come and enjoy. And hopefully, at the end of the day, we can come to an agreement that makes sense for We talked about Caterpillar earlier here. I know there was a condition that came in towards the end. They sent the letter Friday night at 5:00 PM. We had a response letter. With that said, I just want to say, we understand and appreciate Caterpillar Inc.'s concern for protecting their intellectual property and safety, given the nature of their business. However, it's important to highlight the main liability and responsibility to prevent potential accidents associated with industrial equipment lies within the party who owns, stores, and uses the materials, in this case, that happens to be Caterpillar. At the end of the day, we follow the due process by alerting neighbors early on in the process to avoid such issues, and Caterpillar has had the better part of a year to alert to this, to their, alert us to their requests. We hope that the Town Council takes this into consideration and understands our position in this matter. In conclusion, we aim to create a solid blend of residential living, recreational facilities, and natural beauty, beauty while strengthening. and natural beauty while strengthening our relationship with the town of Clayton, and we are excited and barking this journey and look forward to our session with town council today and help bring our vision to life. David's going to come up and talk about the site in a little bit more detail, and afterwards, we'd love to hang around and answer any questions you guys may have. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, member of council members. Apologies, I appear to have broke your clicker, so I may lean over to advance the slides as I go along. Most of you are likely very aware of where the site lays. Some of you have walked the site, but for the benefit of the public here as well, just wanted to quickly give an overview of where the site is situated, along NC 42, along the eastern boundary of Clayton, along the Neuse River. With, to the east, just to the east is East Clayton Elementary School and Flowers Plantation. We're across the street and just slightly east of the Shopstick Glen Laurel out to our west. And if I did not state so, I'm a senior planner with McAdams, so again, thank you all for the opportunity to come here and present and give you a little more information on this exciting project. So just to give you a brief snapshot, obviously, this is a proposed conditional district request that includes a mix of single-family detached townhomes, apartments, and a proposed event venue. We'd be capped at 825 units total, pretty even mix between the three, with a 13-acre, roughly, proposed pod for that event venue that Joey just covered. We're capped at a maximum of three delinious per acre. And again, with one nice thing about this site, you know, anytime you're looking to develop a site and you think about what are the potential impacts of what's around you, we're kind of naturally buffered by the Neuse River to our north, to our east, by NC 42 to the south. There's no existing subdivisions that we abut. So although sometimes it's fun to join an existing community, that can also create conflict, so here, we feel like it's a very, overall, very low-conflict development proposal. Ben spoke somewhat to the comprehensive plan consistency. Again, we are in adherence with your kind of low-density residential designation, not exceeding three delineations per acre max. Your conditional district zoning does allow for a mix of housing units to be proposed. As Ben spoke to, one item is your adopted plan speaks to predominantly single-family detached within that low-density designation, but we believe that the higher percentage of non-single-family detached that we're proposing is warranted for a number of reasons. One is there are a significant amount of environmental constraints on site that really lends itself to a more clustered development, and that clustering or denser style of development pattern lent itself to some attached units or apartment units rather than just single-family detached kind of sprawling across the entire site. Also, we look at this as having destinations. It's not just your typical single-family subdivision, both in the potential public park, should you accept that dedication, as well as the event venue. These are things to draw people in, to create a destination within this part of the community, and if you're doing that, you want to be able to take advantage of that and have it more accessible to more people. So clustering, having some attached units, having a little bit more density around those destinations, just allows that more access, more walkable, and a more kind of profitable or efficient use of a destination. And then finally, we have a recently widened NC 42. It's already done by the state. Let's take advantage of that, where you have the supportive system in place, and we have the proximity of Shopstick Glen Laurel and other multifamily across the street, so this is not as though us proposing something other than just single-family detached is some type of anomaly out of line with the surroundings. It's very much in line with the surroundings, and to take advantage of those commercial and have nearby patrons to help support that commercial. So this is our overall plan. Ben showed this. As I proceed through these slides, the yellow highlighted area corresponds to just the area that I'm speaking to. So in our placement of our different uses, we looked at how does it, where does it make sense to kind of have your more, your denser or more intense uses clustering those closer to NC 42, where you have utilities, whether it's roadway or public utilities, that's best able to support it? So that's where our multifamily pod is kind of centralized right along NC 42 between our two access points. As you move away from that, still closer to 42, you have, again, townhomes, but then it kind of, those townhomes then act as a transition away from the multifamily into your single-family pods. The only exception to that is you do have one townhome pod against the Neuse River next to the event venue. We did that because we wanted to have the ability to have some lots that fronted on open space, and then also were an opportunity for some people, if they wanted to, you know, have a rental while they're attending an event, we could maybe look at having, could you have some of those townhomes be available to help support that event venue? In yellow, kind of in the central portion of the site, where you really have the greatest access to the riparian buffers, to the floodplain, to some of the stream trails that we plan on doing, you have the single-family pods kind of acting as that, again, the next step in that transition. And then finally, as Ben mentioned, in kind of the red or pink shade up against the Neuse River, our existing estate facility that would serve as the event center along the Neuse River. So in total, this site would have about 110 acres of open space, which is approximately a third of the entire site, about six acres of that being improved or active open spaces. We are offering to dedicate 13 acres or more, if you're open to it. But along the Neuse River, along that future trail, there is a stream restoration effort that I'll highlight on another slide that Joey spoke to, and we are looking, we have conditions that allow for some of those lots to front in open space to really, we want to capitalize on the beautiful scenery. We want to make that part of people's everyday lives. And then finally, in terms of recreational amenities, this actually says a minimum of two, but it's really three, three pools, three clubhouses, hard surface sports courts, pocket parks. The public greenway would be part of the future of Mountains-to-Sea Trail, as well as additional private trails, that we would add additional ones as we move through this process. So a really abundant array of recreational opportunities offered as part of this development. Highlighted on the screen in yellow now is the area of the stream restoration, so this is where the prior owner buried what was a stream, and we've been working with Army Corps, DQ, to look at, how can we bring this back to rights? So this area that's highlighted, we'd essentially be reestablishing the natural stream within this area, great benefit to the environment and just part of our civic duty. Water and sewers available. I won't say more than that unless you have questions. In terms of traffic management, we do have our traffic specialists here that can address questions, which you probably will have, but safe to say, we did a transportation impact analysis as required by your code. That's been reviewed by your staff as well as by DOT. Based on the findings of that, we are responsible for constructing two westbound right-turn lanes, lengthening an addition left-turn lane at NC 42 and Castleberry Road, and monitoring that U-turn. Again, Nate, my traffic specialist, can probably speak to that a little bit more, because I know you have questions about that. And we did, following the planning board meeting, reach out to DOT. We'd had two access drives, were alerted that there was a code conflict with that based on our, based on our number of units, and although two is really kind of more ideal from a spacing standpoint for DOT, we were able to get them to give us an okay for an emergency access drive, so it's not something that's going to create an additional conflict point for our everyday users, but in the event that the other drives were blocked by some natural disaster or something, we would have a third way that emergency services could get into the site, and that would be between our two site drives, kind of in the multifamily pod. And I've mentioned, obviously, NC DOT has already widened our frontage road, which is, which is great to have this abundant access at our front door. Ben hit on a few of these. I will quickly just mention, we have a range of architectural conditions, assuring you that mix, assuring that vinyl's not the primary exterior facade material, that all your residential buildings will have a front porch or a stoop, that you'll have varying color schemes, both for single-family and townhomes, to make sure you don't have kind of this cookie cutter identical house feel going down the road. All our roofs will have architectural-style shingles, minimum six-inch overhangs. We will also have, we have it where our east-west collector road kind of cuts through the site, that all of those units will be rear-loaded or have driveways that face access a side street, so you have that easy flow east to west through the site without having driveways confronting that. It's just, it's both safer, more efficient, and just creates a more aesthetically pleasing streetscape. We would also include, for that same reason, a mix of both front-loaded and rear-loaded townhome units, to again, limit the impact of those driveways. We have a standard that would require at least 25% of masonry on the front facade of our single-family detached homes, and all those single-family detached homes would have a two-car garage, and we have some language from your code, actually, that speaks to the multifamily building materials as well. So all of these are items that, with the exception, I suppose, of that last one, are things, there's the benefits of a conditional zoning district, is we can get to come to you, mutually work out some conditions, and you get some extra design standards you might not otherwise get in a by-right development. This is just a slide to kind of give you a sense of how different color or material schemes can create even the same house to look, you know, to have some visual interest and look differently, depending on what kind of options you go with. Here's just a 3D rendering of kind of what that could look like from a street standpoint. I'll mention, there probably, there should be street trees in here rather than just front yard trees, so imagine some beautiful street trees and help me out, but this kind of gives you a sense of what that can look like in terms of just general feel. Similar example, just now for a townhome, townhome building, kind of going down the streetscape. And an example of a multifamily apartment building, in this case, three-story, is kind of in line with what we might envision for that kind of entry multifamily pod. Some of your typical amenities that correspond with those type of multifamily developments, images shown here. I will not go through all the conditions, but did just want to highlight the additional conditions that we added following your planning board meeting, kind of in response to some of the concerns raised by Caterpillar. We included a condition that would state that we would essentially meet with, Golden Arrow Collective would meet with the representatives of Caterpillar, which, as you know, we've actually already done, but we put it in here as a, as a condition. We also thought about security concerns, safety concerns, and there's a provision in your code that gives some flexibility to street subs. So normally, we're doing residential development, your planning department would tell us, you need to extend those streets to the edge, so that when the next subdivision builds, they can just extend it, and it's a continuous flow. Well, in the event that Caterpillar does move forward, as they've suggested, and wants our site to our west to be an expansion of their existing facility, this condition and your code, frankly, would allow us to, basically, if you, if your staff found it appropriate, to terminate that connection, say, we don't really need that connection, this just acknowledges that, and in the event that they move forward, we could stop those short. That way, there's not that continuous road end, and we can continue the buffer all the way across without it being broken up by a street. And then finally, the last condition we added is reference to that requirement for a third access point that'll be provided through a temporary drive, or not temporary drive, excuse me, an emergency access drive. So again, we'll be available for questions, but some of the key takeaways I would just ask you to consider as you're kind of deliberating and thinking about this proposal is that, you know, what we're offering here is a residential mixed-use neighborhood with a variety of different housing options. It's kind of ideally situated at the eastern gateway of Clayton, along the Neuse River, would have a proposed greenway. There'll be a future extension of that Mountains-to-Sea Trail, and along that area, we are proposing to dedicate additional 13 acres or more, a public park space if you want it, to take advantage of that. If not, it would be, it would be private. We do have DOT recent improvements that really help support this project. Our delineations per acre, our density at three delineations per acre is aligned with your long-range comprehensive growth plan. We've included a host of architectural standards, and to me, the true kind of differentiator here, I mean, I may as just as day true, because I think even without this, this would still be a very strong project, but to me, what sets this aside from a lot of other developments is that event venue that we have, that we're kind of tailored into our, part of our project to create that, you know, unique opportunity for economic development, for community gatherings, and that we're kind of tailoring that within our design. So with all that said, I'd again, thank you for this opportunity to present, and we'd be happy to take any questions you may have.
Mr. Thompson?
My question relates to the entrances. I just want to, I'm trying to envision, if you're coming from Clayton, going east toward the development, in order to access, the only access will be to go to a U-turn? There's not any left turn lane or left turns into the development, correct?
Correct. We wanted a left turn lane, honestly, and when we had our neighborhood meeting, the only people that really joined us were people that hoping there would be a signal and a turn lane there that were on the opposite side of the street, but DOT was not supportive of that due to kind of the recent investment improvements they just put in. So currently, right now, you're correct. It would be if you're kind of coming from town heading eastbound, you'd come in, you'd take that U-turn, and then you'd come in our western entrance.
Okay, and there are right turn lanes in coming westbound, but there's no left turn feasibility to get in, correct?
Correct. If you have some strings with DOT, we're open to it.
I could just add to that real quick. In the developer agreement we've put in there, that hopefully, we can get some town support for a median break in that area, so we could have that left turn in and right out. I think it'd make a lot better cohesive experience for our, our community, if people are coming both in and out, so we're hopefully, hoping for your support on that.
So I have a couple of questions and maybe some clarity on some things. So you said that environmental constraints lends to more density and, was it compact?
Yes, I mean, when you have more environmentally sensitive areas, you want to kind of create more buffer away from those and instead kind of cluster your development within the less sensitive areas? Yes, sir.
So if we didn't have the environmental constraints, you say you would have less density?
You, you could. It's more, I mean, it depends on are you using the same lot sizes or not, or extending it across the entire site, but, so I guess the answer is it depends, but in our minds, we'd rather, some of the benefits of having a little bit more cluster density, both in addition to environmental benefits, is also kind of financial and the maintenance needs as well. If you have less street, that's less street, the same number of units on less street length, that's less street for you to have to maintain, less streets for your police, public works, trash, or whatever to have to pick up, so there's a lot of kind of benefits of clustering it closer together.
Okay, I just want to get, again, it wasn't anything to, I'm just trying to get some more clarity, because in the year and a half I've been sitting up here, I've heard everything as far as on why we need to have more density. I haven't heard the environmental one yet. I have less, yet to hear somebody say, hey, we want less density, but again, you just, just more and more about.
So yeah, it's not that I'm saying we want less density, it's more of what's the most appropriate way to place that density on the site?
Question, so the 13 acres for the park, is that, when that's figured out, as far as, did you have that in or out? Is that numbered with the whole 277, or did you take those 13, they said 13 acres or more, is that taken out?
So that's the 13 acres approximately for the public park site, and again, that's something that, through the development agreement, if you wanted it, we've dictated exactly what that acreage is and what the boundary is, but that, that is included within the overall, you know, 277 acres.
Could I get, you said you got a traffic out here, right?
Yes, sir.
My man, how you doing?
Hey, Napo, coming with McAdams.
Thank you. So again, on that, the traffic light thing, so what's the trigger, I guess, the number? When do you say, okay, hey, you know what, because we're talking about 825 units, okay? So that ain't like any, that's a lot.
So that wording actually came from NC DOT. They, in their minds, they don't want a traffic signal installed until it's ready for it, and so they don't want to, essentially, they don't want to stop traffic on 42 for one or two cars to make a U-turn, and so they, they want to work with us to make sure that we're keeping an eye on that, and we're going to construct that signal when it's appropriate. And so that would be us working with NC DOT and town staff, keeping an eye on it and installing that once it's actually meeting the proper warrants.
Yeah, I guess my struggle, and I hear you, but it's just, everything just sounds so vague as far as, okay, hey, you know, totally making this up, when, you know, after six months and we hit 275 cars are coming out or whatever, that's a trigger point. So I just, everything just sounds really kind of vague for me.
And, and that's something that throughout the process of building, building And, and that's something that throughout the, the process of, of building, building out the, the site, it, a lot of it depends on when the homes are built and certain, certain phases of, of the site. There, there's a lot of variables that go into when those U-turn movements are going to be essentially triggering it. But I, I understand your, your concern. It's, it's, it's a tough, tough variable because the NCDOT is the, the ultimate say in it with it, with it being their, their signal. And so it's, it's truly just us, us working with them to make sure that we're installing it when it's appropriate.
Councilman Thompson says something and so could you explain to me that third access point? I, I don't understand, what does that look like? Is it a, a row with a chain across? He said, well, you know, it won't be regular public that can come in and out.
So this is an example. It, it would be, there would be gated off. Ideally, you want it to be a situation where that drive, it's, you would have kind of, you know, stone and everything set under there so that it could serve emergency vehicles. But you don't want anyone to mistakenly think that this is an entrance to the public that they should take. So you want it to kind of be as unnoticedable as possible while still providing the means of a fire truck or emergency service vehicle to be able to pull off the road before that gate. And then they can access that gate and get through just in the event that there's, you know, a fire or something and the other means are, are blocked or inaccessible for some reason. But this is just, this is not the only way you could do it. But this is an example from another project that we worked on of an emergency access.
And last one, last one. So those pictures that you show, that's not any of the actual product that you're going to have.
Of the elevations?
Yes.
I'm gonna let Joey speak to that.
So they're obviously digital imagery, but it's as close as we can get from where we're at in the current stages of, of planning. And we feel that very confident that they'll look very similar quality, if not higher. So.
But it's all concrete slat.
Correct. I want to also address just the traffic issue. I know a couple council members have mentioned it's kind of vague. I'm happy to work with you guys on getting ahead of that. If we put maybe a certain number of, of units to start that signaling process. I mean, it talked, Ben said it can take, you know, additional 12 months after we get the study to build it. So if we wanted to start that at, you know, after 400 units are built or something along that nature, we're happy to, to agree with that. So.
Let me add one other thing, you know, when you're talking about the U-turn and, and, you know, when would that monitoring potentially initiate a signal? I don't know if this is comforting or not, but I, I want to just kind of share that in this case, you know, we'll have to continue to work through DOT. And essentially if you're worried about how will we know when, when that could be triggered? In this instance, you don't have to be the enforcement agency. DOT will monitor it and tell us, okay, now you have to do this. So if there's a question of how are your staff, you know, enforce this standard, it's almost like, well, they don't need to because DOT is the one that's going to basically force us to do that if, if and when it's, it's needed.
Ms. Archer?
Thank you. As a follow-up to that, I was thinking more along the lines of a signal analysis at some point. And I've tossed it around with various people that could be tied to, you know, like the final plat approval or maybe a certain number of units or something like that if, if the rest of council is amenable and are you amenable to a condition like that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Your neighborhood meeting, in the presentation to the neighborhood meeting, how many townhouses were presented to the public in the neighborhood meeting?
It was less at that time.
If I recall, it was around probably 130 or 50 townhome units at that time. You know, it was a long time ago when we had that meeting. And as you guys know, as a site this large, there's a lot of due diligence that goes into that. So we had to have a baseline plan. And then as we continued to pull back the onion and layers of the site, as I previously mentioned, we ran into the environmental remediation issues where we had to look at this stream restoration across the entire center of the site. It's the largest stream. It took away some buildability, added some costs. It kind of created a different type of environment for us and we had to kind of put our heads together to, to, to make this work from a viability standpoint and also for community livability standpoint. I will say on that note, we did reduce the number of multifamily from 310 down to 240. So we did kind of flip flop there a little bit. We feel that townhomes is a better product than multifamily at the end of the day. We also had to take into, into concern that we're in an ever-changing economic landscape. This is probably the most, one of the tougher times to be a developer in the last decade. And we run market studies consistently and these market studies consistently told us that, you know, hey, townhomes are a great product. Obviously it can't be all townhomes, but people of, of all incomes and all walks of life need to have a place to live. And we want to provide different levels for everybody, meaning some multifamily townhomes and single family. And again, as previously stated, we did everything we could to maintain the natural beauty of the site, integrate the single family homes along those rivers and obviously backing up against the, the beautiful open landscape.
I'll go last.
Thank you. So you said 275 acres of land are currently, it's around three, three units per acre. What's the net density understanding? I guess there's open space of about 110 acres.
Yeah, we're at approximately 4.8 units per acre.
Okay. Few other questions. The, the event venue parking on street is one of the conditions. Is that going to be parallel parking or is the street going to be widened that section? I'm just thinking about through traffic in the neighborhood and how that's going to affect that.
You know, I'm actually willing to take that condition out. I think it's not conducive to the neighborhood and after we've run our parking analysis, we don't think we'll even need street parking. There's a great spot right in front of the, the current event space that'll handle the amount of parking that we need.
And I did have the question about townhomes too on the neighborhood meeting. Thank you. 325 seems a little bit more than I guess I was anticipating. Thank you for your, your answer back. In regard to the non-owner occupied versus maybe, maybe rental, I mean, obviously I understand the multifamily is going to have, that's going to be predominantly that way. But can you just describe, I guess, how you envision the rest of the, the townhomes and the single family?
Yeah. I mean, our, our goal for the River Mews community is primarily to create a for sale community. The, the bulk of the homes will be for sale. However, as a, as a developer, we do need to keep a portion of the community and have some optionality for us on the backend because there's, there's, well, a couple of examples at play here. One is if, if we're in an environment where all of a sudden, single family homes are, are selling like crazy and all of a sudden that slows down and there's 50 lots available and someone comes in and says, hey, we'll buy these 50 lots from you, but we want to make them rentals. We'll, we'll, we'll have to be in the position to say yes, because it could be detrimental to the project if we can't continue the velocity. However, it's important that we will hold all buyers at hand to the architectural standards. You know, we'll, we'll, we'll make sure that they are, whatever they build is going to be of for sale quality. I also like to say that we were willing to indeed restrict a large portion of the site for rental units, well over half. Therefore allowing for, allowing for a situation to not to happen where this becomes some kind of crazy, you know, for rent community across the entire board. So, you know, residents of all walks of life are coming into, into Clayton and it's important. And I know rentals can sometimes get a bad rap. And again, we're not sure if we're going to even do, you know, rentals on the next portion of the site. We are keeping that optionality open, but we may find ourselves in a period of, you know, economic decline in the near future and recession may hit and purchasing power often decreases when that happens and people might not be able to get a loan. And we need to make sure that options are open for those people as well. And I think that adheres to your guys' code of creating a tangible housing for, for, for many different stages of life, many different stages of economic, economic periods for people. There's also renters by choice. People don't want to have maintenance. Maybe they're downsizing. Maybe they don't want yard work and things of that nature. And so really creating a community for, for all stages of life is, is our goal. But again, our intention is to indeed restrict a majority of the community to prevent an overabundance of rentals.
Okay. I mean, thank you for that answer. Is that something you're going to put in the developer's agreement or what's that? How's that going to be outlined then?
We were happy to put it in developer agreement.
Yep. Okay. And I just, I just want to add to obviously our role in the town as in, in council, a lot of people have asked for executive style housing in this community. They go right, you know, a few miles down the road east of Clayton where they can get that product. So I would hope obviously that's something, you know, as you kind of continue to work through this process, you consider that because that's been a big ask of the community. A lot of people, you know, they, they unfortunately have to look outside of Clayton to get that. So just want to throw that little, little nugget in there. Other question I have, that's about the event. I really like the idea of the park dedication for the floodplain area along the Noose. The only challenge I have with that is our hesitation of sacrificing our, our parks and rec fee and lieu. So I don't know if we put that in a condition to work with, work few in the staff, but I mean, obviously there's parks and rec fee and lieu that are, you know, y'all are abided by through this, through this process. But then it seems like there's, there's a, there's a need or a willingness to, to provide some of that open space land for the town as well. Can you, can you outline what your thoughts are on that?
Are you, just to understand your question, are you asking if that we would still be willing to propose a public park and still?
Well, I mean, I guess you proposed a little portion of that, but then there's additional land. I guess there's around 50 acres along that Noose that is going to be considered open space for you all. I assume the HOA is going to have to maintain that. But there is potentially an opportunity for town to, 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 to have that. But, you know, then the town may have to sacrifice, you know, fee and lieu for that. So just want to get your input on that.
Yeah. You know, I, I, I understand fee and lieu is important and, you know, anything for, to, to, to fill the coffers of the, of the city generally goes to good things, enhance the city. And you guys, you know, don't want, just want to give up fee and lieu for nothing. And I think, you know, again, it's, it's, it's a very unique site. It's a very unique portion that we're willing to donate. It's along the Noose River and, and we want to help share in the costs because we know that you are giving up fee and lieu, which is why we want to help with pickleball court and a kayak launch and potentially a pavilion. I mean, I think if we can, you know, get past our conditional zoning entitlements today and then continue to work on that together through the development agreement and find a solution that hopefully works for both of us, that's, that's our goal.
Do you have an idea what that fee and lieu amount would be?
I believe it's close 16 acres is, would cover our entire fee and lieu. And I believe it's approximately, is it around a million dollars? It's called around that right here.
Okay. I had a few more things, sorry. One of the things, would you be willing to make a condition to add balconies on the multifamily section?
Absolutely. Yep. Every multifamily product we've, we've built has had balconies and it's standard for us. So for sure.
Okay. Another thing too, and this may be a single family as well, but you said something about, you know, masonry elements or, you know, mason, no vinyl on the front, but then you mentioned something about the sides and the rear, the developers typically do that. I just find it hard to include that blend. Is there any willingness?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, we obviously, it's important to keep our options open. There's, I mean, new technology coming out every day with vinyl that looks nicer and nicer. I know vinyl does get a, get a bad rap. I, I will say this, if, if it, if it provides some comfort for the council, we'd be willing to commit to, you know, a standard of maybe 25% masonry on the multifamily and a hardy siding to, to go with it. So.
Okay. And then what's the single family going to have also?
Hardy as well.
Is it around all sides or just around the front?
It would be on the sides of the building and then we would have sort of 25% masonry on the front with, with hardy on the remaining portion.
Around all, all sides?
Correct. I'm sorry. Oh, the trim and fascia would be vinyl though.
So, yeah. No worries. Think that's all I have right now. Obviously we have the stoplight, you know, condition that we got to kind of figure out too, but that's all I have for this.
One thing, even though the plan is, it does have its inconsistencies when it comes to our, our plan. A couple of things that I do like, you know, as Clayton does grow, I think it's important that we provide all types of housing, especially, you know, with all various types of incomes that comes with Clayton. So with that growth, I think that's a, it's a good thing for Clayton. Transportation, of course, is something that we should focus on because that is one of the top things that Clayton residents, that's one of their things that we're concerned about kind of going forward as we do grow is, you know, making sure our roads are being taken care of and we have, and it's safe, especially when it comes to public safety and all of those things. So yeah, overall I think this is a good, this is something good for the community. But, um, you know, when it comes to, like I said, transportation and things like that, we definitely have to focus in on those things. But I do like the idea. It, it kind of, it balances between having development and also taking care of the people with all different types of, well, all walks of life. So thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Just wanted to follow up on two things. I missed, what was the condition regarding 25% masonry? Did you get that porter or did, what was that 25% masonry on single family, on the single family?
On single family on the front, correct.
On the front? Okay. Okay, great. And as far as the signal, I was just trying to tweak this here. Would you be agreeable to something along the lines of a warrant analysis at 300, 600 and before final plat? 300 units, 600 units and before the final plat?
Can I confer with Nate real quick here?
Exactly. And you'd have time to think about that.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. I have some concerns. Well, first I want to speak to balconies. I got balcony, balconies.
Sure. Yep.
Yeah. I got balconies in Clayton that are now storage areas. So their kayaks are propped up outside, their chairs are stacked up outside. There are boxes that are outside on balconies. So can, you know, take that for what it's worth. I would hate for you to invest all this and create all this and then everybody decide their balcony can now be a storage space for their kayak and their bicycle and it's a hot miss.
I, I think that's something we can monitor moving forward. You know, if it becomes a nuisance to the community, we can certainly put some sort of condition with our residents saying, you know, what you can and can't put on the balcony. I will also say we're pretty cognizant in all of our developments of where we place storage. We generally have ample storage for, and you have storage units for people for this matter. So I would say maybe those buildings didn't have enough storage or they've just got a lot of people that love the outdoors. Regardless, we'll definitely take that into consideration. So.
I would. You know, and I know this is just a digital schematic of the type of single family homes you want to put up in there, but you know, a square, no matter what color you paint it is still a square. And this looks very much to like the product that has consumed the Clayton market both today.
Sure.
And it is not even close to like the quality or the design of product like I see at Glen Laurel, which was the first 600 home subdivision in the history of the town of Clayton. So insofar as trying to help you, you know, like I understand you have market studies and you do all that, but like, I ain't really sure that you have zoned into what the Clayton market study is. Maybe what you're looking at is a broader picture of what's customary across the United States or different regions of the country. But you know, you really should give some focus to what is needed in this region and not really base so much about what you're doing based on what the trends are across the country.
Sure.
Clayton is unique and special. It's not the ordinary, it's extraordinary. So take that for what it's worth.
I appreciate it.
It's your dime.
Yep.
My most sincere concern is this neighborhood meeting. And I'm not clear that what was presented to the neighborhood meeting is the exact same thing as to what you are presenting this evening, which for me is a concern because that is not transparency. If that is the case, this is one story and then today this is another story. And I have some concerns about that because as mayor for the last almost 20 years, everything that's been ever mentioned at a neighborhood meeting is the exact thing that got mentioned at the council presentation. And I know that time is money and I get all that, but that's a big red flag for me. And I know that time is money and I get all that, but that's a big red flag for me. Because it's not done the way it should be done. And I want you guys to get started off on the right foot so that this ends up on the right foot. And right now, I don't feel like it started on the right.
You know, I want to say it's certainly not how we do business. It's not how we like to do business. I think back to my earlier comments that this site proposed some unforeseen challenges that we never could have thought could be possible with this guy, our previous owner, I should say, or current owner, soon to be previous, removing a stream, you know? I mean, our environmental consultants went in and they actually found it on satellite imagery back from like 1994 and pushed it all the way through. We kind of discovered this massive problem and we didn't really know the best way to handle it while keeping the viability of the site alive. And we wanted to make sure, a couple of things. One is that we adhered to at least the three units, you know, per acre on a density standpoint. And we didn't feel that changing the site the way we did would upset the neighborhood because, you know, earlier discussed the main point in the neighborhood meeting was actually just traffic and turn signals. No one actually really asked about the home types, the density and things of that nature. And so we didn't feel it was a large enough change or an issue that was brought up to go back to the neighborhood again and say, hey, this is what we're changing. In retrospect, after hearing your comments, which I appreciate, I wish we would have done that. And I apologize. Again, it's not how we like to do business, but it's sort of the way the site laid out for us and it was an unfortunate circumstance, so.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Anybody else wish to speak on this? Please step forward and state your name for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members and staff, as well as guests here today. My name is George Penther. I'm a facilities operations manager at Caterpillar at the Clayton Machine Development Center. I'd like to just take a few minutes to talk through the Caterpillar perspective. Caterpillar's been a member of the Clayton economic community for over 30 years, leading with the manufacturing site on the south side of 42. And the site that I represent, the Clayton Machine Development Center, opened in 2009, doing research and development, bringing the next generation Caterpillar products to market, to serve our customers. And have been doing that successfully in good partnership with the town since that time. The activities that we participate in, we are running equipment to find every quality issue that we might be able to find to provide the best product for our customer. That includes operations during the day that are extensive and limited operations over the night, 24 hours a day. We certainly support the economic development of the Clayton area and support that very much. We have been in communication since the planning meeting with the Golden Hour Collective and have been working on the, based on the condition 24, the buffering discussions. And first of all, just the safety of the Clayton residents, including the potential future residents of River Muse, is of utmost importance to us. We do run heavy equipment. It's essentially a construction site that's always, always in the works. Always, always moving 24 hours a day. So protecting those future residents is critical to us. Also, the, probably more of the uncertainty comes into play when we talk about the potential for a noise problem in the future at some point. So with these units, which this is new compared to our current operations, we have been in operation since 2009. The, with the addition of units up to 48 hours in, excuse me, 48 feet in height, that leads to some uncertainty as far as sound protection. Our team has gone out to survey the site with equipment in use over the last two weeks since the planning meeting to understand if that might be an issue or not. We are in the summer season, the foliage is very thick. So we don't believe it would be a concern, but that is, it's not known at this time. And the implications of the height of the building structures compared to the elevation of our site and the activities that we have with machinery running is uncertain as well. So we apologize for the late submittal of the new language for a condition to be added, but we do think that is important. Technically, condition 24 has been fulfilled already. We have had discussions with Golden Hour Collective. So we feel it's the inclusion of something going forward, the condition as stated, as provided, late this evening, is important to our support of the project. In the May 12 letter, we did ask for a delay in approvals. We are willing to forego that if the condition as stated late this evening is included in the language with condition 24 already having been fulfilled. The types of noise filtering that we feel might be included would be something like an earthen berm, but the size and scope of that is uncertain at this time, just given our limited time since the planning meeting to evaluate that and the height of the buildings, the height of our elevations and all those factors. So we feel like more time is critical to that process.
Okay, so my question, a couple of questions. One, for those who are watching on social media, I need, I want you to give some clarification in your communication about what the concern is. Are you saying that Caterpillar is too noisy for the residents? Or the residential area is too noisy for Caterpillar? I'm not really, I'm not really clear on what your message is regarding noise.
Sure, there will be a time period, a long time period where construction is ongoing on the River Muse project. Obviously, that does generate noise. Our concerns are for the future residents of the River Muse community as they, we do have machinery in operation during the day and throughout the night as well. So we want to make sure, work preventively, proactively with River Muse, with the Golden Hour Collective, to make sure that we do everything possible to ensure that's not an issue going forward.
Okay, so you're worried that Caterpillar's machinery operating could be too noisy for residential?
Future residents, especially those on the top floor.
Okay. Another question that I thought was interesting that got brought up this evening is the, the timing by which Caterpillar has started to express their concern over this, having a full year lead time, knowing this was coming, and now all of a sudden, there's communication and strong communication coming from Caterpillar. And as a corporate neighbor to the town of Clayton, obviously, we value our relationship with Caterpillar. But I do think it's fair to ask, you know, why y'all won't end this at the front end? And why are we always, you know, just starting to hear Caterpillar's concern at this particular timeframe?
Sure, it wasn't until the most recent planning meeting about two weeks ago that we realized the full extent of the development and how close it was to our boundary. The property, 52 acres, that's immediately adjacent to the River Muse property, is new to us. We purchased that as a buffer to ensure that we are a good neighbor for the long term. But also, we do anticipate using a portion of that in the long term. And recently, our facility needs are increasing. The amount of work that we have is increasing. We do anticipate using a portion of that land productively for something like machine test activities. So we'd like to be able to utilize the land that we've invested in.
Okay, so in order to utilize it, you need an extensive berm in place for separation?
I would not say that's, no, that's not certain at this time. Thus, the language is not requesting a berm all along the River Muse property. It's that we continue to collaborate and work together on that.
Okay, fair enough. Mr. Thompson?
I want to echo the mayor's concern. A couple of things. I'm not in favor of the new condition because I think, that's like saying that because my neighbor plays loud music, I have to put thicker windows on my house. This is something that, number one, we've got a noise ordinance. And if you're obeying the noise ordinance now, there shouldn't be an issue. So, you know, there's ordinances in place to take care of noise. And if you're in violation of it, we're going to shut you down or limit your noise somehow. So to me, there's ordinance that takes care of that already. And I don't think it's fair to put the, I think the shoe's going on the wrong foot in this scenario. And, you know, you've got, just because you're already there and doing what you want to do doesn't mean that your new neighbors should have to foot the bill for what you're doing on your land. And I don't think, I don't even think that's ethical to ask that your new neighbors consider contributing to any kind of barrier there. To me, that's your problem, not their problem. And I do, I love Caterpillar, always thought the world of Caterpillar. But I do agree, you know, there's a neighborhood meeting in November. This project has been going on since before then. So I think in the last week, to try to raise concerns, to say that this is suddenly an emergency on Caterpillar's part is unfair on the applicant and the money that they've invested in this project already. That's all I got to say.
Anything else?
No, just to, just to address the comment, we do, we do respect the timeline and the neighborhood beating. The noise ordinance, we have every intention to obey that, obviously. This is a new, a new neighbor that's coming along. The proposal is not that the, that the Golden Hour Collective foot the entire bill. That's not how it's worded at all. Participating in some sharing, we believe, is reasonable and would go into that with good faith in negotiations.
Thank you for your comments and for being here. And I appreciate you all honoring the spirit of the requests of the planning board, which was to try to come to a resolution and a compromise ahead of tonight's meeting. So I know there's probably been a lot of time and effort that has gone into that and so we really, we do appreciate it. My question was trying to get to more some nuts and bolts just because of the new condition that you brought forward. And I just wondered if by any chance you had a ballpark estimated figure, you know, money of what the types of improvements you're needing would even potentially cost?
We do not have a ballpark figure at this time. There's a lot of different ways to address any potential issue that might arise, including, will it be necessary at all? We don't know that at this time. Controlling any potential noise at the source could be, could be an option. I don't believe that, for example, creating a 30-foot berm down the entire length of the shared property line would make sense. We're not going to ask to remove that many trees off of our property or the River Muse property in order to be able to do that. So we do feel like there'd be a cost-effective solution that we could come to that addresses the future concerns of the residents and our needs to operate as well.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Mr. Casey?
We've seen this before and actually, I think we made a condition down on, how we said, and I can't think of the project, because there was a, there was an environmental center there that did some testing and stuff like that. And I've heard this done in the county, maybe even putting a condition to, or putting in the deed for those property owners that are along that border, that, hey, you're next to an O and I district, so you may be subjected to, you know, noises. No different if you were a farm, you build right next to a farm and be subjected to smells and the sounds of a farm. I mean, is that something that would be beneficial to you all? Would that be something that the River Muse crowd would be accepting of? Is this something that would make sense? Maybe that's a town attorney question, I'm not sure, I'm just floating it out there.
I've seen that done in the context, in particular with proximity to airports or airstrips where you put a disclosure on a plat. Sometimes that's a requirement by the council. So yes, it can be, can be done, can require a plat disclosure.
And then I would assume a realtor by law would have to divulge that information? Is that something we?
It would be on the public record at that point. Just trying to pull back up the map to see the pods and see what was going, what was proposed to go adjacent, meaning?
I think single family on one side and townhomes on the other side.
Ben, can you put the map back up there? It appears to be townhomes down the, down the property line, is it not? Single family on the back line? Pod four as well. And so all of those would be deeded conveyances that you would expect a buyer to be aware with what's on the public record, unlike a rental, an apartment rental.
So if we were to come up with a condition that did, you know, attach some sort of notification for a future buyer that, hey, you are, you do have an industrial neighbor, would you feel then that you had done your due diligence for the future residents? Would that at all satisfy your request? I'm just curious before we try to hammer something out.
I'd like to understand exactly a little bit more. I'm not familiar with what that communication to the buyer might be, whether it's a public notification, it could be three years before, that they would be expected to find on their own versus a disclosure in a, of a condition for that specific property. So I would like to understand that a little bit more, but certainly open to the dialogue.
One more follow-up to that. I was just sitting here thinking as you were speaking, I mean, I certainly don't want, and I don't think even the applicant or any of us want to really do anything here that would limit your future expansion. I mean, we appreciate that you're here and, you know, we appreciate the work that you do. So, you know, as long as we have our current ordinance in place and that's not affecting, it doesn't seem to be really affecting your workflow, because there are other residences in the area currently. So I'm assuming, you know, you're already having to be somewhat cognizant of what you're doing. But I just wanted to go on the record that, you know, I would hope that you would realize we don't want to limit any future expansion or anything like that for you in the future.
Yeah, appreciate that.
And I echo that same sentiment. So is that something that we need to consider? You're a real estate agent, right? What's your thought?
So if you have it on, and the attorney can vouch for this, if it's on the plot, the biggest thing as an agent is disclosure, disclosure, disclosure. You have a legal obligation to make sure you disclose to the person that's buying the property that that's a noise area. So if it's on there, it would address everything that you say, regardless of him wanting to look it over. He says he wants to, doesn't really have to, to be honest with you. If you put that on there, the agents have to make sure they disclose that. That's law. You get sued over that.
That's correct.
All right, anyone else? All right, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on this?
First, thank you for your service. Second, thank you for your attention to detail because that's where the devil is in any of these things. I've sat through this. My name is Alan, too, for the record. I've sat through this and it is, to say the least, mind-numbing. It is probably one of the more complex plans that you have received. It seems to me that it is, if as presented, if it's developed that way, it's certainly a nice presentation. The question is, one, is it? And there was a concern that the mayor brought up about the representation at the neighborhood meeting. And I've conducted those and you want to make sure that somebody does not feel after things are approved. This isn't what I signed on for or else I would have opposed it, that's one thing. Then there are a lot of other unanswered questions with regard to the conditions, the wording and the things like that. And keep in mind that throughout this process, ultimately, you're going to be dealing with the aftermath of the issues that are involved here. And the language is critical. It seems to me that there is a lot of work that needs to be done and perhaps it needs to come back on another time. The biggest thing to me was raised, well, I say the biggest, one of the greatest things that is an issue is the traffic concerns. I live on the west side. I am familiar from years back that there was a north connector proposed and the north connector should have come, and I don't know what's happened to it now, but it should have been to divert and disperse traffic. but it should have been to divert and disperse traffic north of the town, coming somewhere across, I believe, this property and aligning with Glen Laurel Road. Don't know what's happened to that, and it seems to me that you're looking at 825 units times, say, an average of three people, that's, what, my math, 2475, 2,475 additional people. And then, let's say, there are a couple of cars and one in the household works. So where are you going, where is that proper, where is, where are those vehicles going to be dispersed to? There's not a big traffic pattern going towards Wilson. I don't know of any economic attraction that would take the traffic there. So then it either goes up to the, let's see, the road there at the river, I can't remember the name of that, and it comes out at the fire department at Wilson Mills. And then from there, they can go up Covered Bridge Bro, Covered Bridge Road up to Shotwell Road, then come out on Old Garner Road. And the traffic there, I can, I come that way in the morning and then the evening, and the traffic there is unbelievable. You've got all of those units that are opening up off of Shotwell Road. And you've, I, I think we've got enough R6 residential here that the defense, the density of development is strangling the ability to navigate around town. You can't do anything now in the mornings or in the evenings except off-peak, or you're just gonna, it's gonna take a while. And again, respectfully, I think that they certainly have a good proposal if it develops as it is presented. I would suggest that it should come off and somebody do some work with the details, thank you.
All right, anyone else wish to speak? No one else wishing to speak, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to council. Mr. Sims.
First, let me say that, um, I always say this, I'm pro-development, it's always how we develop. And my concerns in this is, well, let me, let me, let me get the Caterpillar thing out the way. I still don't quite understand what the, the whole issue is as far as with Caterpillar and them, where they're building at, because at the end of the day, if a person of residence is buying a property, then that's part of their responsibility, along with their agent, to make sure as far as what's around that area disclosures. If I was moving in next to a railroad track or whatever, then they need to make sure that my agent is letting me know as far as, hey, that's what I'm moving in next to. I'm all for Caterpillar, and my grandson got the little Caterpillar truck thing, vroom, 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 and all of that. But at the end of the day, I'm trying to figure out too, if you're talking about future development, I'm having a hard time holding somebody else up because of what you might do in the future. With that being said, and moving on, I'm having a hard time with 825 units. And I, and I get the whole animation thing, but the mayor touched upon it. I, I really want to see the product, because what's happening here in Clayton is we're getting a lot of cookie cutters. And again, I'm not saying that you guys are not trying to, you know, bring a bad product in. I'm not saying you guys are just, you know, I'm quite sure you guys are on up and up, you want to make sure Clayton is all good to go. I want to see it. I want to know what that product is, I want to see that product. I want to know that it's a quality and it's a standard that we, that we need to start going to, because for too long, and you kind of see it, we're starting to get these cooker, cookie cutter things. And so now we need to ensure, how do we do that? By actually seeing what's going, going to be there, it's just holding our developers accountable to what they're telling us we're going to put in there. So I actually feel good about the, a little bit better about the traffic thing. Some people kind of get on me as far as with the traffic, but I'm still like 50/50 on it, but I do feel a little bit better as far as the measuring. And, you know, at the same time, I get that DOT is the main one responsible for that, and that's a whole nother conversation. But again, for me personally, I want to see the product.
Anyone else?
I am not in favor of a new condition for Caterpillar. I do have the traffic concerns. You know, we see all over town that by the time we realize we need a road improvement or a stoplight or a turn lane, the problem already exists. And so, you know, but I don't think this is the developer's issue. You know, I think the hand that they've been dealt by DOT is a bad hand, that this is not your issue, because I think you're willing to do what you got to do to mitigate it, and, and probably wish that there was a turn lane and all kind of other things to, you know, be better for your development. So I just think you've been given a bad hand by DOT, and that this issue lies with them. And that whatever we can do from a legislative standpoint to encourage their movement on this, because what we've seen in the past is that they, they're reactive, and they're reactive two or three years after there's a problem. And, you know, I think the, the timeline that we might see a signal up in a year of the, I, I don't believe that. I believe it'd be five years. Yeah, and, and where to get the funding from, so I, I, but I don't think that's on these guys, I really don't. I think that's a stake problem that, that they're, they've got some blinders on or something to think that that's not going to be an issue. And that's really my only two issues there, I feel like, yeah, that's the only two things I've got.
Thank you, sir. I wanted to comment on a lot of the things that I loved about the project and then just bring up the, the area where I'm kind of stuck. Obviously, the open and natural spaces, the event space looks amazing, getting further detail about the, the kind of vibe you're going for there. I always wish for more single-family homes when these plan developments come through, but I do appreciate that you increased the number of townhomes and, and offset that with the apartment units, because I do think that that is a product that, that is in high, in high demand. And I liked how you mentioned giving the different types of housing kind of their own identity and their own feel that also, I think, appeals to folks when they feel like they're in a townhome area or a single-family home area, or likewise. The restoration of the stream, I've got to put a plug in for that, because we really are talking about restoring the habitat to what it was meant to be and correcting the drainage pattern for that area. And we do have a lot of flooding and drainage concerns throughout Clayton, so it's nice to see something come through that, that's addressing that in a comprehensive way. Amenities look great, and then, of course, trying to work out the, the condition with your neighbors. I mean, I know a lot of, I'm sure a lot of conversations have taken place for that issue, and I appreciate that. Where, where I do get stuck is, of course, with the growth plan and the comprehensive plan, or the comprehensive growth plan. The staff report does say several different things about how the application does align with our comprehensive growth plan. The overall density is consistent with low-density residential. You're preserving land along the river, which is also recommended in our growth plan. Then we get down to that sticky issue, the recommendation in the growth plan is for predominantly single-family homes in this area. To speak to Mr. Everett's, Councilmember Everett's point, though, what we are achieving here, which is in the growth plan, and I did go back and read it in preparation for this application, it does really emphasize a variety in housing. Even though I wish there was more single-family in this particular blend, it, our growth plan does talk about a lot of things regarding multifamily housing. For example, where you have proposed positioning it on the parcel. We've got the infrastructure there to support it, we have a four-lane highway. We have the, the apartments located at the intersection with Glen Laurel Road right down the street. So I'm just, I know I'm dancing around both sides of this issue, but I, I did want to get that out there and, of course, get other councils' thoughts about that as well.
I have a few comments. First, I'd like to say, I mean, obviously, I think you have a fantastic team. I think you have a fantastic property. I mean, having the opportunity to see it twice, it's special in the community, and I think that's good and bad for you guys, because I think it's special because, you know, it's a unique piece of property, but then, you know, you were going to have high expectations for that property too, right? Because there's not a, a property that's, that's as unique as that one in this, in this area. I do want to echo some of the same sentiments that Councilwoman Archer did. You know, obviously, you know, I, I love the, I love, you know, some of the things that you've done with, with the area. I love the, the three clubhouses, the three pools, I love the event center. I think that's, that's a fantastic and a unique parcel, and I think that also contributes to the uniqueness of it. I'm still a little hung up on the, the, the number of townhomes, I guess, from where it was originally to where it is, is now. I do think there's an opportunity for, you know, some executive-style housing, just because you have such a valuable, unique piece of property here. I do think we need to also, you know, consider some of the conditions too, if we, you know, and how we want to address those as we move forward, and just, I, I mean, I'm, this is a, this is a tough one, so.
Well, it sounds like you're saying a little bit more what I'm saying also for me, again, if I could take a look at it, and for that to happen, we'd have to table this. And as far as for me, that's what I would move towards. Until the applicant could bring in some to where we could see the actual product itself.
I think, I think it is important just to note, you know, when we talk about any details or anything else like that, you know, these are what our boards are for as well. And, you know, it's our job to hold our boards accountable and make sure, you know, that, you know, we just have our, that genuine trust with our boards, especially when they, there's a group of them that actually go through, you know, all the, you know, all of our ordinances and everything else like that when it comes to bringing it to council as well. So I just want to make sure that is noted when it comes, when it comes to that.
No, I'm, you know, I, um, this is a, this is an amazing project, it's an amazing opportunity. It's an amazing investment. Just don't, you know, like, my, my biggest concern is like you're still missing the boat, because I got concrete slab houses all over this area. I can go out here and purchase one for $230,000 right now on a quarter acre or a half an acre. Like, what I see in the picture, it's everywhere. And maybe some people do, personally, I don't. I don't want a facade where 75% of it is a garage door, and 25% is my front entrance, you know? We got that already, you know? I want you to be able to capitalize, I want you to make good money on your investment, I want you to provide a quality product for Clayton. I don't want you to forget that, you know, somebody, not just y'all, but everybody is missing the boat on higher-end development. You know, everybody's trying to cram in a bunch of stuff to make the numbers work, and it's great, that's strong business, it's a smart move. But you're also missing the opportunity to have really something unique and different to market. Right now, the only thing you have going for you that other people don't is you got a river, you got some great park and recreation space, and you got like three different ways to live, you know? There could be so much more, that's all. And that's just my perspective, and I don't do what y'all do, and y'all don't know anything about the flower business, you know? But I'm just sharing from, from a layman's perspective, that if I wanted to invest in a nice piece of real estate and have proximity to downtown and quick access from 42 to the bypass to Raleigh, like, I don't have anywhere to go for that, I have zero, you know? I have nothing, there's nothing else. And, you know, I do worry about the whole traffic issue, because NC DOT is underfunded, and there are a million projects in the state of North Carolina that need NC DOT. And NC DOT, I guess they're doing the best they can do as well, right? But that's not going to help us when I got 60 cars in a turning lane trying to get onto the property, and it's starting to back people up, or it's just making the left lane pause and the right lane is the only cut-through. And, you know, it's stuff like that. You know, I want, I want it to be safe and easy for people to invest in and get into and out of that community. And that's, you know, like, I know it's going to be safe, and I know we're going to take care of the fire and the rescue accessibility, regardless of what's going on, because we've got a whole separate entity for that. You know, the whole event space is amazing, and that's probably one of your greatest possibilities in all of this. You know, I'm, I'm, I don't object to, you know, what you're bringing up here. What I object to is that, you know, I don't think you're, I mean, I think you're going to be successful building concrete slab houses, but I think you're also missing the boat on higher-end, larger lots. And I'm sure that the market study doesn't show that across the country or in this region, but we, because we hear all the time, where do you go for this? I will go back to really the whole, you know, one thing that's a red flag, and I'm sorry, but it really is true. Like, the one communication this way with the neighbors, and then the one communication coming tonight. And I know it's not on purpose, I know you guys are transparent, I complete trust and faith in what you do, but, I mean, that's kind of, you know, that can come back to bite this council in the butt when, when people say, oh, yeah, well, you accepted this, they told us that, and they brought it to you for this, you know? We have to be very careful with that. At the same time, time is money, and I get that, and you guys have invested a lot of money in getting to where you are today on this, and I don't want to see it take three months to come back to us and help you move this thing along. If it is going to be delayed, I want it to be like a quick delay, so that you can take care of some of this stuff and get back in here so we can get this thing moving forward. But that's going to be up to them.
With that being said, let me ask you, ask a question. How, how long would it take for you all to actually show us some products?
I understand your concern about the products, and it's definitely noted from me and my team as we were speaking earlier. I, I will say that the beginning of this, this process, when we were working with the city, and to the city's credit, they said, you know, one thing you really need to be cognizant of is, is how you build these and what the architectural standards need to be. And from what I know, the architectural standards have been upped, the game has been upped on that, and we've taken that into account, and we've put those architectural standards into our conditions, and we're going to adhere by those architectural standards to ensure that we don't build the product that you guys are talking about. And that's why those are in place, they're in place for a reason, and we have to abide by them. And, and again, as I previously said, any lots that will, that will sell, not building our, our own, we will hold that developer accountable to those architectural standards with the betterment of the community. To directly answer your question, I, I can't give you an answer right now, because we're still in the, the discovery phase. But again, I just, I'd mind you to take comfort in knowing that with those standards in place, you're going to have a nice product, so.
That's a rough one there, because, again, and, and hey, much trust, and I understand what you're saying and all of that, but it's the responsibility that we have up here. And so many times now, what I got to hear and hear, you know, a year and a half, I got a year and a half in, I'm hearing, you know, hey, it's the same thing, same thing, same thing, whatever, right? At least I will be able to say, if you say, hey, Councilman Sims, take a look at this, Councilman Sims, take a look at this, take a look at this, I can say, hey, listen, with clarity, I was able to see it's going to be something different, the product looks like this, this is. They can go to YouTube and, well, we're streaming this, and they can see it themselves. You know, I can point somebody to that particular date. But all I'm going to hear, again, this isn't you, this is the, this is the industry as a whole, they're going to say, hey, just another developer saying another thing.
I understand, I do. And I think we did adhere to even an elevated level of architecture standards today. A lot of the things that you see, you know, as you drive around the communities is vinyl siding, it doesn't look that great. We are going to put hardwood siding on, you know, all the sides, that's a beautiful element to all the homes, we believe. And I guess it's, it's unique to what's been built in the last decade, that's for sure. And again, the mason area in the front is going to look phenomenal. So I, I understand that you want to see, and I'm similar, you want to kind of see and touch and feel it, and so you can see exactly what's in front of you. But again, it's just so hard at this, at this juncture in the, in the development to understand exactly what we're going to be building. But again, we will adhere to those architectural standards, so.
You see, now you're pushing me into a bad position here. You see, now you're pushing me into a bad position here. Cause now.
It's not my intention at all.
I'm quite sure. It's not your intention, but at the end of the day, there's, there's just certain results for certain things. Um, with that being said, for me, uh, I make a motion that we would table this to maybe our next council meeting unless somebody else has another date.
I think the development agreement is on track to come to you in, in thirty days. I'm looking at Ben. Is that, is that the right schedule? Th- thirty days on the DA? June the fifth. So this, this project will be back in front of the council on June the fifth.
Um, thank you for answering the additional questions and for your thoughts, Mr. Sims. And uh, you know, given just the kinda questions and, and sort of thoughts that are coming up, up here. While I feel like we have really good momentum and there's so much that um, I love about this project. I do feel like maybe at this time, rather than force a vote, give it a little bit of breathing room, give it a little bit of time to work some of these things out. And I would support um, a tabling, but only until just the next meeting if other council wanna weigh in on that in agreement.
I just wanna know clearly, what is it that you need in the next two weeks? What is your expectation of information that you need to move this forward?
Absolutely. Um, I'm giving them the opportu- I'm giving them the opportunity to show a product. Or products.
Or like a more detailed look of what they're going for.
I'll take that.
Cause I think it's, uh, so I get right now, it's pretty vague. These are generic kind of photographs for presentation. Something a little more specific, some uh, three or four examples of color, texture. That kinda thing, just to give some better visual of the product that you have going on. Is that what y'all are asking for? You wanna see?
Some wow, absolutely. Some wow. Wow.
I don't know how you gonna get no wow with seventy-five percent of a dwelling being a garage door and twenty-five percent being a front entrance. That ain't no damn wow. But it is what it is. So you see, that's what they're looking for. Some renderings, uh, a little more in detail than what's been presented with this. Okay, and you know, I don't think they have enough time to do another neighborhood meeting and try to get back here in two weeks. But I just wanna make sure that it's, you know, clear for the record that I do not believe that they are trying to mislead anyone by what happened at the neighborhood meeting versus what has happened here. Uh, the concepts, uh, the intent is still the same. And I don't want that to be, I, I think it, you know, I just wanna make sure that everybody else who's out there realizes that what you say at a neighborhood meeting is exactly what you better say when you come to the council meeting, or it's a delay. Anyone else comments? Cause we have a motion and I need a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to continue this to the June fifth, is that correct? June fifth, the next council meeting. All right. Any comments or questions? All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign, motion carries. We'll continue. All right, thank you. And I'm gonna call for a fifteen minute break. I need a cigarette. I'd like to call our meeting back to order. Uh, the next item on the, uh, public hearing agenda is the Project Life Dust Development Agreement.
Good evening, council, mayor, town staff. Economic Development Director Patrick Pierce here, uh, presenting an opportunity here, Project Life Dust, that we've been working with Stan Wenzel and Bio Realty on for, it's now several years. And excited to be able to bring it forward to you for your consideration here for this economic development agreement. A quick outline of what I intend to cover here, the property, kind of industrial case use, the overview of the project itself. Uh, use of tax incentives, some of the incentive specifics here and some of the taxpayer safeguards around those. So the property here is sixty-seven acres. I'll put up a map here in just a few minutes at Little Creek Church and Ranch Road. The town originally purchased this in two thousand and fourteen for one point two million dollars. Um, the intent at that point was parkland upon future um, evaluation of it because of the grade and some of the environmental features on there. Um, the kinda use there for that, for that purpose um, was gonna be difficult and really limited from active park space, which is why we're taking a look at this from an, an industrial perspective here. So the reason for that is it is um, really on the western boundary of the East Clayton Industrial Area, which is home to lots of our um, multinationals and biopharmaceutical users there. It's got connectivity now with the Ranch Road extension down to US seventy, which will soon be Interstate forty-two. And interstate connectivity is always a plus when you're going out for RFIs to attract companies. The twenty forty-five comprehensive use plan identifies this property as an employment area and gives an opportunity um, to fulfill that with this plan. The 2045 Comprehensive Use Plan identifies this property as an employment area and gives an opportunity to fulfill that with this plan. And there is minimal industrial project, meaning square footage that's available in Clayton and Clayton, Johnston, and Eastern Wake Counties, so it's a great opportunity to fill that and create jobs and investment and tax base for the town. So you'll see the property there highlighted in purple, that is really kind of gives you some positioning there as it sits kind of triangulated between Inview, which is the former Bear facility, one of Caterpillar's facilities, Griffles, and Novo Nordisk. You look at the featured land use map there, to the right you'll see that big piece of blue, which is Employment Center, and the red star there, and that is where that property is located. So from a comprehensive use plan and future land use map, it's within the plan as you all have set forward. This chart here didn't mean for it to be an eye chart, what I just would highlight there for you is number five, Johnston County. If you look at vacancy rate, 1.2%. If you look at absorption, which is taking on additional square footage, also number one in the triangle, so and even Eastern Wake rates high in several of those categories as well. So you see there's an opportunity here and a market for this, and certainly a drive for this kind of facility in the Johnston County area and Clayton. So project overview and working with Bio Realty, they have proposed a three-phase project that would be marketed towards biopharma and life science. Each of those buildings would be between 100,000 and 155,000 square feet. They would be in phases and they would be three separate buildings because of the topography and the environmental features that that I mentioned before. This is a speculative project, so while there's a lot of interest, there's not, it's not a built-to-suit for a particular user. The other piece on this is part of what has kind of maybe held this this piece of property back and why it hasn't been developed, or is it, it does not have sewer service currently, so they would need to, they would need to construct sewer service to this that would also be used and designed to be a future regional pump station to service the entire basin, which has some benefits to the town as well from an operational standpoint. So this here, and I will, when Stan Wenzel comes up for Bio Realty, he'll go into more detail about the company and the project, but here's how the conceptual layout for the site looks in terms of how those three buildings would be oriented. You can see the three separate buildings there, each in one phase, it'd start in kind of the lower, move to the second one on the front edge, and the third building would go in the back there. So some of the requirements here, they would have to complete the first phase, first shell by December 31st, 2028, these are outside dates, and all phases by 2031. The water and wastewater infrastructure that I mentioned, there's a minimum investment in here of $9 million for the shell, 10 permanent jobs, that's that they low figure, but one that has been used before that that we put in there, but think that that's more than achievable. All the transportation improvements and the TIA, and they've worked on that, and you know, once there's a user identified, well, but have worked on conceptually what those improvements would be. And then we wanted to make sure, and we've worked closely from the get-go with with Johnston County Economic Development, and it's required that basically the developer stays in in compliance with both agreements from Johnston County as well as the town to be able to have the economic development incentives. So what the town takes on here is an economic development agreement here and an economic development incentive grant, sale of the property for $31,500. That was based on an appraisal in August 2021. We had an update by the appraiser, not a full update, not a reappraisal, but kind of a market conditions. He thought that price, I would say, and looking through the data he presented, I'd say that price is competitive. There were some things that were higher, there were some things that were a few thousand dollars more, but really, and based on when we entered into this agreement and MOU with the developer, believe that that is still a accurate and a fair market value for that piece of property. The town will also take on lead marketing efforts along with Johnston County in terms of marketing that site to users, keeping the Ranch Road Extension, because that'll be important for that site. Agreed to construct entry signage to the industrial park area and also work in good faith throughout the project to make sure that they can bring it to fruition and bring jobs and investment to the town. So quickly on tax incentives, so just for the public not not familiar with these, these are used to encourage certain types of growth here, obviously having more jobs and continue to be a job base and not 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 a bedroom community, but one that is balanced with job base as well as residential base and and a commercial base. And these vary by state, in North Carolina, these tools are enabled by genuine statute there for these purposes, increasing taxable property, growing employment, and improving local business prospects are three of those in there, and I think checks all three of those boxes. So the economic development grant agreement here would be, would begin with the first, when the first building is complete, the incentive is for seven years, each going with each phase, and it's 50% of the ad valorem tax paid in personal and real estate property there. How this works in terms of for the taxpayer, this is a grant that is applied to the value of the ad valorem taxes already paid, so this is not money paid upfront, this is on taxes already paid for that set duration. So there's still a tax benefit to the town and an ongoing tax benefit to the town, and there is the opportunity there to fill that schedule and things that this grant agreement can be can be terminated. Last, I just mentioned Johnston County coordination, I think we first met, Chris Johnson and I, with the economic, with Johnston County Economic Development, first engaged with Bio Realty back in the fall of 2000, and have been working since with them since, and Johnston County Commissioners are scheduled to have their economic development agreement and commercial lease agreement at the next meeting, June 5th. So close coordination with the county, and I think a really good project that we're excited to bring forward here. So last, regionally significant key new gateway here is you have the Ranch Road Extension and the Interstate, more and different employment opportunities here and really growing upon those anchor tenants that we have, significant value of the tax base, currently it's town-owned property and it's not on the tax roll, so this is a great way to bring it back in there, substantial potential economic impacts, strong taxpayer content, or taxpayer protections, and again, continued cooperation with the work that that Johnston County does in economic development. So that, I'll take any questions, or if you all would want to do that after Stan comes up from Bio Realty to do a brief presentation about their company and a little more details on the project, I'll take either, either way you all want to do that.
Questions?
Two things, you already touched on that, but you did say you did kind of appraisal refresh and it come in slightly higher, but not significantly higher.
I would say it was, it was, I mean, looking through the comps, and it's tough to find exact comps, the one that didn't, was in there that probably best suited this was a piece of property there without water sewer that I think sold recently for $34,800, so under $35,000, that was in 2022. There were some that have gone for higher, that were up in the 50s, there was others that were in the 30s, so it was really kind of a mixed bag there, and there wasn't really a rhyme or reason as to why some of them had sewer service and were actually undervalued, some of them had sewer service, it might have been overvalued. We came up with this figure, and again, this has been really a figure we came up with upon that appraisal, and has been the figure we've used throughout the negotiation here as we've moved forward, so we're, the intent is to keep that, and that was fair market value when we entered into negotiation with the developer on this.
Okay, next, next question, it was one of your first slides, you talked about the job opportunity, I don't know if you don't mind going back to that one.
Yeah.
Oh, this one? Something, okay, create 10-plus permanent jobs above, so for all those, is that per building, or is that all buildings, is it, and I guess kind of to add on to that question, is this, you know, going to be used for for like warehousing, or is it going to be for assembly, what's the, and maybe that's a question for them, but I just.
So I'll let, I'll let, I'll let Stan address that, I will say that this again is a minimum that we've used in other agreements, the intent there is that this is, and part of the county's lease agreement, and this will be marketed towards biopharma, and will be marketed towards that, so the intent is not for this to be, I mean, the highest and best use of this that is beneficial to everyone is to be up that value chain, so it'll be in the biopharma space, in the manufacturing space. If, you know, if for some reason down the line that is not able to happen, and you've got a building, then you want to fill it with people, but I think it's a benefit to everyone to be marketing and putting it in, positioning it in the market at the highest pace, and I won't get ahead of Stan here, I'll let him maybe address some of that if you don't mind.
Sure, we can table that question. Last question, I guess, so they need to complete that Phase One by 2028, I guess what's the repercussions if they don't do that by 2028?
So at that point, the, the, I mean, that's essentially the timetable for the agreement is to hit that, hit that phase, so without coming back and amending that, that as we've discussed is an outside date, so that's not there, that that is not the intent that we have negotiated, but there is an outside date there to have a deadline in there, so we'd like to, obviously, I should see that shell building up sooner than that, but that is the outside date put in there in both the town and the county's agreement.
Does the land come back to the town at that point in time?
There is an opportunity for a repurchase option in there that is part of the deed that we've worked with the town attorney's office on.
I assume at a similar price that what we sold it.
I believe it's for the same price, so you're just basically, yeah, we're, yeah.
Thank you, thank you, that, no more question, thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that, if you don't, I will invite up Stan Wenzel from Bio Realty to do a quick presentation on their company and the project.
Good evening, I'm Stan Wenzel, Bio Realty, and the audience here is another one of my partners at Bio Realty, Doug Cornish. First off, I just wanted to thank you guys for the opportunity to present tonight, hopefully briefly, also wanted to thank the staff for all the efforts to really get us to the point we are today. As Patrick mentioned, we've been at this for a while, but it's a complicated project, and there's, you know, a lot of things we had to balance, and I also wanted to send the message to you guys, we really do appreciate the opportunity to hopefully partner with you and the town of Clayton and bring what we think is a very exciting life science biomanufacturing project to Clayton. This is a brief summary of what I'm hoping to cover here quickly. Patrick asked me to do a quick overview on us, talk about a couple of relevant case studies, and then talk about this project, he referred to it in Life Dust in the minutes, but we're gonna, we intend to brand it as the Biome, and then lastly, open it up for whatever questions you may or may not have. Quick overview on us, we are a investment development firm focused exclusively on life science, real estate, we were founded in 2005. We are known for our successful execution of some of these more complicated life science projects, a lot of them are single-tenanted occupied, because these companies tend to want to be by themselves, and a lot of them have this GMP manufacturing space, and I mean, that's really what we're targeting here with the Biome is biomanufactured. We are also known as a firm for our access to capital, both private as well as institutional capital, we're very fortunate, some of the large institutional investment partners we do our projects with, but we also team that with private equity syndications, and that allows us to do some things when we blend those capital sources that other folks are not able to do, and sometimes land projects that other folks can't make sense out of. And end result for these biopharma companies is we're often able to provide a little bit better lease financing outcomes, and again, get that dependable execution on these complicated development projects. I won't go into all this, but we're often in discussions with tenants, like, you know, why us as your landlord as opposed to a typical landlord or another life science landlord, and these are some of the reasons we cite, and often in many of our projects, we're not tied to a piece of land or a building, oftentimes we're attracting these users just based on our ability to provide the lease solution and our relationship with the client. What's so exciting here is kind of that last point on this list, is with Clayton and what we're doing here with these speculative biomanufacturing shells that will be available and are ready to that growing market, really accelerates their speed to market, and it's a big driver, and I think if anybody on the economic development side knows, that's oftentimes the difference between capturing a project or not. I was going to briefly mention some of our strategic alliance with key players in the industry, these are valued alliances of ours, CRB is a leading global life science architect, engineering, construction firm that we have an alliance with and work a lot on these projects with, and of course, B and K Building Group, you're probably familiar with them, a sizable general contractor based here in Durham, and these are partners and we do a lot with in this space. A couple of case studies, I'm actually just going to highlight some of the single tenant or single occupant projects, because in our mind, the success of the Biome is largely going to be determined on our ability to capture that end customer, and we think we're pretty darn good at it, but we think that these will illustrate some of the cases of doing that, and frankly, in situations where we didn't have as attractive of a site and didn't have as good of partner relationship we have here. First project, this was just for, actually a building retrofit, bought an existing old building and retrofitted, put about, bought it for 4.6 million, put about 17 million into it for a total project around 22 million. I highlight this one only because it's, it was a clinical stage biotech tenant the time we did it, pre-revenue company, very challenging company to make sense out of, and because of the way we, you know, blend those capital sources, we were able to capitalize this, and this is a project we own today in the portfolio. Very good lease outcome for that tenant, I won't get into all the details, but been a very happy tenant client. Here's another project that a little bit better illustrates some of the quality that we try to develop, this was about a 70,000 square foot, 30 and a half million dollar development, the right side of the building was three stories of research and development lab space as well as offices, and the left side of the project was a series of clean rooms, again, the kind of stuff we're going to have in this biomanufacturing building, all those clean rooms and manufacturing rooms that have to be GMP FDA compliant. Again, terrific outcome on this project, under budget, ahead of schedule, design, built, financed from the ground up in 16 and a half months, and actually produced cost savings in which all the parties shared. I won't go into the rest of these case studies, but these are all single tenant projects we've done with notable tenant clients, this one acquired with an institutional partner, and just projects that we think reflect some of the quality that we we tend to develop in a lot of these single tenant projects. Now let's talk about why we're here tonight, which is the Biome at Clayton. Our mission here simply is, we're trying to create a biomanufacturing hub, trying to create an environment that we think will foster innovation and will foster efficient production of this GMP manufacturing space that you hear me talk so much about. We think we've got an opportune location, about 22 miles out of the downtown Raleigh, but also proximate to Novo Griffles, it certainly doesn't hurt, you know, employees, access to talented employees that are qualified to work in a GMP facility is a big deal, and we've got a whole bunch of them right there, and I think frankly, they'll welcome our presence as well, it'll just bring more of that talent base, and then of course, with what Johnston County has been doing in terms of training, workforce training, you guys are kind of ahead of this, but I think it's going to be a big asset for the project. Patrick alluded to our site plan a little bit, three-building project, each building about 100,000 square feet, each building expandable to 150,000, 155,000 square feet, actually, two of the buildings will be expandable to that size. We are dealing with a little bit of challenges on the site, you know, we have some river, you know, riparian areas, we have wetland areas, we have obviously quite a bit of, you know, tree removal to do in certain areas, and then we have a two-tiered site that makes it a little bit challenging, but overall, an excellent site plan that lays out and provides us that expandability. And again, as I kind of alluded to previously, that the trick in this kind of development is we're, we're largely building these big speculative buildings and trying to attract a single user, and it's a little bit risky in some ways for us, the developer, but we think we've got a good site plan that gives us that flexibility and ability to adjust and be successful. From a phasing standpoint, we're going to start to the south of Little Creek Church Road, and then work our way northwest, and then eventually to the east. You know, I talked about these biomanufacturing shells, wanted to give you some sample images of others that we've seen in the market that ours will likely mimic. At first, it's going to be a pretty simple building, it's going to be industrial-like, but have these kind of characteristics. These are just some sample buildings that are reflective of what we intend to put up initially. Some of the characteristics of these shells, I've mentioned the expandability, I've mentioned designed typically for a single occupant, they will be able to accommodate multi-tenancy, but generally, these manufacturers want to be in their own building. want to be in their own building. Again, targeting biomanufactured users. We're going to initially deliver these in a cold, dark shell condition. They'll be tenant-upfit-ready, but they will be a shell. We're going to have a perimeter foundation and slab under the office admin areas, but we're actually going to leave the slab open over most of the areas so we can customize the flooring for the user, as well as all the drainage systems these biomanufacturing users do. Frankly, it's a mistake we've seen other developers not do. They've put those floors in and created issues down the road. From an entry perspective, we'll initially have one entry on the corner of the building, but we're actually designing our wall panel design to accommodate middle as well as end entries. We could have multiple entries. From a second mezzanine floor perspective, initially none, but we're designing, again, engineering and designing our tilt wall panels so they can support that mezzanine floor, as well as have some internal structural elements that will actually prepare it to drop in that mezzanine floor over approximately half of the building footprint. So a lot of built-in flexibility for both the initial user as far as end users in the future. From a parking perspective, initially, we're going to park at 0.5 per thousand when they're spec, but we're going to intend and most likely be expanding that parking for the users based on need. We're going to, it's been designed to accommodate 2.5 parking per thousand when the tenant-upfit comes in. And dock doors, a little bit less of a focus for biomanufacturing, but we are designing our tilt wall panels to also accommodate up to one door per 7,500 square feet, which should be more than ample for any of these biomanufacturing uses. We talked about the shell, you know, we haven't talked really about costs too much. Patrick mentioned in his slide, a minimum investment of 9 million. Typically, these building shells are going to run about 9 to 11 million dollars. What's interesting about this project type is what goes in the building, that tenant-upfit. Oftentimes, it is, oftentimes, it's about what the cost of the building is, but oftentimes, it can be four, even five times the cost of the building. So we may have a, say, a $10 million shell, but literally have up to 40, 50 million of tenant-upfit put into that building. Generally, when those tenants are doing that, they're not leaving the exterior building the way it was. They want us to upgrade the exterior. That's more common than not. This is actually a real live example of a similar project like this where they built the shell and subsequently upgraded it when the tenant-upfit went in. And these are other examples of high-quality shells we've seen that we could very easily see the, when the users come in and want to do their outfit, these are the kind of imagery we, we hope to target as well. Want to talk a little bit about contribution to the community or community impact. Patrick, in his presentation, alluded to a minimum of 10 jobs. We actually think it's likely to be much higher than that. But I want you to take everything I say right now a little bit with a grain of salt, because there's so much variability in these buildings. You know, we have different types of manufacturing that goes in the buildings. Some systems are, some types of manufacturing are automated, some are very manual. So the one involves more people, another involves less. We obviously, as I mentioned before, the level of tenant-upfit can vary widely. So of course, the job numbers and the project cost numbers can vary widely. But these are some examples of projects in the area where there was a manufacturing component and the jobs. And some of these are larger projects, but each one generated at least 250 jobs per, per facility, and some, as you can see, well in excess of 750. We believe that, very likely, that the potential community impact, and again, this can vary widely, so I want to make that clear. But we think there could easily be 180 to 200 people per building, generally of a building this size, that's what we generate. So that should mean there's up to 600 full-time biomanufacturing positions. In addition, during the construction period, when we go from the building of all three phases, we start from civil engineering all the way through not just construction, but also there's a commissioning qualification validation exercise here. We think there will be at least 150 or up to 150, excuse me, temporary jobs on site through that whole construction lifecycle. In addition, we estimate, based on that level of fit-out, we think 135 million for the three buildings is a, is a reasonable expectation. Again, varies, varies widely. I'm hopeful we'll find those numbers to be conservative. In addition to those community impacts, as Patrick mentioned, we're also doing some significant roadway improvements to both Little Creek Church Road as well as Ranch Road. We're also putting in the pump station and associated infrastructure, which will be developed on Clayton-owned land and become Clayton's. That'll provide sanitary sewer service, you know, not just to the property, but as Patrick mentioned, it can accommodate future expansion to meet the demands of the overall drainage basin. So kind of just to wrap up, when we started this process, oh, well, you know, I can't believe the dates Patrick mentioned, but I know it's well over a year. With Johnson County and Clayton, we sat back and said, well, you know, what are we trying to, what's our objectives here? And it really was boiled down to this, attracting biopharmaceutical, research, development, manufacturing companies to Clayton, and developing these institutional quality, you know, high class A, A- minus biomanufacturing properties. And we think, we think the biome does that, and we're hoping you'll, you'll see, agree with us. Thank you. Any questions?
Questions?
Thank you.
That's all I have. If there's any questions from, or we all get on questions?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
My name is Alan Tew, and I first want to, again, thank you for your attention and the opportunity. I want to know, before we go much further, whether, whether or not I have all of the information needed. There were two separate FOIA requests, the first of which yielded the economic development agreement. I don't know if there is any revision to that. The second was the emails relating to the appraisal, the solicitation of the appraisal, and any communication concerning the validity of the appraisal, or any challenges to any of the comparables. And then I have the Kirkland appraisal, which is dated August 31, 2021. Now, when I filed, I talked with all the council members, and this thing's been delayed from January. I followed it each month. And finally, it came up in the conversation with one of the council members. There was some discussion about the appraisal. So I, it's kind of hard to navigate the website to find the FOIA request form. And thanks to Heidi, I received that, and over the weekend, I filed a FOIA request on, yesterday. And so the request is as follows, any and all appraisals of the subject property subsequent to the original appraisal, and all communications relating to the request for the appraisal, and comments concerning the appraisal and prior appraisal project life dust. So I have reviewed all of the documents, and I guess I have some concern as I go forward and address my review of the development agreement. I can find out what maybe I need to know. A brief history of this property, this 67 acres is on the left side as you're going south on Ranch Road at the intersection with the Little Creek Church Road. That was originally purchased from Debbie Massey, June 27, 2014, for $18,000 an acre to conservation, conservation fund to hold it for the town to acquire, which the town acquired August 22 for the same amount for the specific purpose of recreation property, used as a recreation. And I happen to have a copy of a letter that I had written relating to a conversation about this. I was at a Rotary meeting, and this was in 2017. And I asked a former recreation employee about the progress of any use of that property. And he said, the town had some concerns about the use of the property for part because of the pond, for one, and the need for grading to terrace it to have a flat surface for rec use. He mentioned, and so I point this out so that your predecessors, I'm not sure that, you know, I'm not sure all of y'all were here, here at that time. I think maybe Councilman Thompson and Councilman.
That was it?
Yeah, I think you may have been the only one else.
Nobody else was here?
Said there's been mentioned that some discussion with the town about selling or trading the property for a relatively flat parcel of land. Another rumor involves the use of the property as a school site, so I point this out to show that if there has been no land banking or no fund set aside to acquire property, is this a good deal for the town? Now, I did get, in response to my FOIA request, one item, which I couldn't print, was a report from Triangle Business that reported the sale of 400 and some acres on Gordon Road in May of '22 for $60,000 per acre. The road, the property across from this totaling about, I want to say, 40-some acres, was also owned by Ms. Massey, and it was sold to D.R. Horton in May for $45,000 per acre. So I'm just pointing this out to show that there is significant value differentiations here. A review, and I'll get to the appraisal in a minute, a review of the agreement divides it into three tracks. What I do not, the economic development grant of the tax is 50% of the ad valorem tax upon completion of this site to be reimbursed after the developer pays. So the question I have is the obligation of the developer to pay the per, the ad valorem tax for that particular parcel, or is it for the 50% of the ultimate ad valorem tax on the finished product? Does anybody know?
So it is on the inception of the grant, the first year that the grant is given, it'll be on the ad valorem tax that's come due that year. So that, that'll come due on the first building. So valuations usually happen, I believe, at the end of the calendar year. And then, so if it was completed in '25, that the value would be in the '25, your tax bill comes in '26, and would be based on that value that's on that year's bill. And that's how that would be established. That's how economic development incentives are typically done. If I'm, I think I have that correct there, and if I mess that up, town attorney, please let me know. But that's.
It's structured so that the, the grant always follows the payment of the taxes and not the other way around.
Well, help me understand a little bit here. There's a difference between the price of the lot at the time of the sale. And so what I'm asking is, once this is completed and you get either a sale or qualified lease, and the building's up, is 50%, 50% of, say, one of the facilities was 38 million, or is it just 50% of what was paid at the time before of the closing on that part of?
No, it's based on the tax value at the time.
Okay.
Which is determined by the county.
Okay. So now then, when it's, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, you're speaking to, it's hard to.
I said, Mr. Tew, this is not a deposition, this is a public hearing. So you just need to make your comments.
Thank you very much. I think I know the distinction, but I appreciate you reminding me. What I'm trying to determine is this, are the tax dollars going to be based in the future on the completed part? And I don't see that in this. Okay. The, the other thing, and I saw the presentation about an outside date on the development agreement. And it, if somebody would just show me where that is, I would appreciate it. The term of the grant is, it appears to be seven, seven, seven years after the completion of each of the, each of the buildings that are being contracted for. So I don't know that. So my suggestion is somebody may need to take a look at that since it's not a deposition. One of the things, two things in here, the town, they are building the lift station. D.R. Horton is sitting on a $4 million acquisition in close proximity. So the only thing the town gets is if this happens first, they're the one that builds it. Whoever taps on pays the tap fee. The other thing is whether or not the town, they, under 13.2 of the development, 13.3 says they have the option to select town electricity or, or not, unless the town doesn't have the right to provide it. So do power unless they preempt, the town's authority appears to be the likely choice. I think you've seen that happen on the others. If the appraisal is the other thing, there is, there is on, well, it doesn't have a page number here. Page 32 of the appraisal has comparable land sales summary table. One, 2150 US Highway 70 business, May 18, 2021, purchase price $4,885, 169.74 acres, 25,000 an acre. That's in Smithville. That's where the Amazon facility is constructed. There's a substantial. There's a substantial difference between the cost of land, industrial, residential or otherwise, between here and Smithfield. And the others, 2019, yielded, this is number two, yielded $54,105 per acre. Then, um, another one on 70, 2018, was $41,000 an acre. And then the property, U.S., number five, U.S. Highway 70, 474 acres. And this was closed in 2017. That was $9 million, $18,952. This is the same property that was sold in August of '22 to, um, Nova, Nordisk, generating a $60,000 per acre sale price. So there's several things that I have, our concerns about the validity of the appraisal. It was done within six weeks, $2,500. And, um, it just, it doesn't add up. It doesn't match. And I don't know how they came up with, um, with the figure, but these figures are for industrial pieces. And I think that the price is significantly higher. So that's something that I would suggest would need to be addressed. And you think about it, I don't know how long this goes out. It's not a deposition, but you look at it and figure it out. And if it goes out seven years after the completion of each one of these, it's, um, a long time. And somewhere in there was a mention of 2031. I don't know. But you got a long time and you got valuable property. And where are you going to get the property to replace this for recreational purposes? The Cox family, Jimmy, well, the Cox family owns about 400 acres of land along Highway 70, across from Griffles, coming back down Pony Farm Road and back down to Buckhorn Branch, and then some of it across Ranch Road. So a lot of that probably is industrial property. And are you going to be able to negotiate any park property out of that? I don't know. But there is no other recreational facility or properties that I'm aware of that would be in this southeast quadrant of the town of Clayton. So those are the things that I have. If you do decide to do it, I would ask you then, from the proceeds, from the tax on the appreciated property as a result of the development, be set aside to acquire some. But I don't know where you're going to have it because there are no other tracks that I'm familiar with that would handle that. So, um, I think certainly long-term, it's, um, something that has promise, but I think that, and would ask that you all to, oh, take a look at the agreement, make some modifications on the price and then the length of this. Thank you. I appreciate your patience, tolerance.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? All right. If not, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to council for their discussion.
Mayor, can, can I add a couple of things for the record? Just, just for council's benefit. Um, yeah, the, the issue about replacement, uh, the recreational purposes is entirely separate issue for the council. But speaking to the valuation, um, of course, you know, we hired an appraiser to put a value on the property and that's what he came up with. And then Patrick went back to that appraiser and asked him to take another look because the appraisal was, um, from August of '21. And he asked him to take another look, uh, more contemporaneously with his hearing. And he issued a letter that we, we just received recently. And he makes a couple of points which may dovetail in, uh, into some of Mr. Two's comments. It was talking about price values in 2022. And the appraiser specifically says in his update that there were, um, in Wake and Johnston County, there were increases in prices in 2022 that then went back down in, in 2023. So from 2021, you were, to 2022, you were seeing increases. And then in 2023, you were seeing decreases. And his comparison to other properties identified, um, similar valuations for properties that did not have sewer. The statutory requirement for this public hearing, uh, this conveyance is that it's the value of the property with the conditions attached to it. And the conditions attached to it being the, the sewer infrastructure requirements, the transportation infrastructure requirements, they affect the value of the property, um, to a, to a third-party purchaser. So the valuation, um, we feel the valuation submitted by the appraiser and then updated of 31,500 per acre, uh, is, is consistent, um, with fair market value, subject to these conditions. And that's the value that, uh, ended up negotiated in the proposed agreement.
All right. Questions or comments for the attorney? All right. What are the wishes of the?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a, a motion to approve the development agreement for Project Life Dust.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the agreement, Project Life Dust. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Up next on the public hearing is the 2023-52 OA Sign Ordinance Amendment. Billboards. Andrea Porter wants to know if you got any blueberries left over because they don't usually eat candy up here. Get some brownies out of that pizza box.
Good evening again, council. I'll try and make this quick. Um, so this first text amendment in front of you is a, um, text amendment 2023-52-OA regarding billboards. The aim of the proposed text amendment is to allow for relocation of billboards of subject to annexation or development agreement. And it also adds a time limit, um, requiring billboards on parcels annexed in town to be removed within 15 years. The amendment was initiated at the request of the Economic Development Department and Town Council. Um, the language, proposed language is here on the board. This language was drafted by the town attorney, um, so therefore has been approved, uh, been reviewed by the town attorney. Um, essentially, the language would allow for billboards covered by, covered in this language to be moved to a location where they do not meet the 2,000-foot separation requirement. That's really what generated this amendment. We have some cases where that is not possible to do. Um, as far as the approval criteria, as you can see on the screen, um, went through, but the text amendment is consistent with the remainder of the code. The, um, text amendment is a result of changing circumstances regarding the number of non-forming billboards in the ETJ on vacant property that could be annexed into the town for development. Um, the text amendment does not correct any error and does not, um, it's not to, the purpose of the text amendment is not to comply with state or federal statutes or case law. The planning board unanimously recommended approval of the text amendment, um, with the following, with the consistency statement as seen on the screen. And, um, asking for council action, if council does adopt the proposed text amendment, the, um, asking, we also, I'll ask you to adopt the consistency statement 2023-52-OA stating in part that the ordinance amendment is consistent with the comprehensive growth plan 2045 specifically goals LU2 and strategy LU2.3.1, and this is a public hearing.
All right. It's been noted as the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak? Please step forward, state your name for the record. No one wishing to speak? I'll close the public hearing, turn it over to council for their discussion.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Despite Ben's comment, uh, this was a collaborative draft and we went through multiple iterations because every time we, Ben and Patrick and I wrote it and passed it around, we said, well, what about this situation or what about that situation? So I, I don't take credit or to blame for it. It was a collaboration.
All right. Mr. Casey.
A motion that we approve, uh, 2023-52-OA. Oh, and the consistence, and, uh, is there, oh, the ordinance amendments are consistent with the comprehensive growth plan 2045, specific goals LU2 and strategy LU2.3.1.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. The next public hearing is 2023-51 OA Sign Ordinance Amendment string light, string lighting.
Thank you. Um, so this is, uh, and I realized after I'd written these that we're actually amending the same section, same code. Um, so I apologize for not combining these into one amendment, but it was easier this way. Um, the purpose of this proposed text amendment is to allow decorative string lighting to be used by businesses as part of their signage. And it also defines when the holiday period occurs in the town. This amendment was initiated at the request of the Downtown Development Association and Town Council. Um, you can see here, the, the bulk of the amendment, it adds a definition for decorative string lighting. It defines holiday period to be between November 1st and January 15th of each year. And it adds standards for the decorative string lighting that you can see on your screen. Regarding the approval criteria, the text amendment is consistent with the remainder of the code and all approved plans. The text amendment is a result of changing circumstances to allow businesses to utilize decorative lighting to accentuate building site features and provide lighting for outdoor dining areas. The text amendment does not correct any area, any error, nor, um, does it revise the chapter to comply with state or federal statutes or case law. The planning board unanimously recommended approval of the text amendment and adopted the consistency statement stating that it's consistent with the growth plan, specifically strategy DT 1.1.1 and goal, and goal ED3. If council adopts the proposed text amendments, consistency statement 2023-51-OA is also recommended to be adopted, stating in part that the ordinance amendment is con, is consistent with the comprehensive growth plan, specifically goals LU2 and strategy DT 1.1.1.
All right. This has been noted as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Please step forward, state your name for the record. No one wishing to speak? I'll turn, I'll close the public hearing, turn it over to council for action. Mr. Casey.
I just want to highlight the, uh, the value of our advisory boards and I appreciate the DDA coming and, um, suggesting and pushing, um, to get this, get this ordinance changed. And with that being said, I'd like to, um, approve, um, the ordinance, uh, 2023-51-OA. The ordinance amendments, 2023-51-OA are consistent with the comprehensive growth plan 2045, specific goals LU2 and strategy DT 1.1.1.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right. I'm not really sure what we're getting into with fiscal year 2324 budget. Is that, is that like less than five-minute discussion or are you just giving us a brief update or?
Uh, no, sir. This is the actual public hearing related to the action, the, the budget process. So do I hear a break? Is that what you're about to say?
Uh, no. Unless there's coffee involved. Or you brought a pillow.
Well, yeah. Mm-hmm. All right. Then I'll go ahead and set it up and, uh, Mr. Mackay, Finance Director, will be, uh, carrying it. Uh, much of this information is, uh, what we've been discussing at the last couple of retreats, or excuse me, the, uh, work session and the previously from the retreat. Uh, but this is the public hearing for the FY24 budget. Uh, Robert will go ahead and expeditiously work through those slides and hopefully, um, we will get everybody up to speed with the, with the proposal.
Kennedy Mayor, members of council, Robert Mackay, Finance Director. Tonight I have the pleasure of, uh, presenting the town manager's recommended budget. All right. The first slide, we talk about the budget process. So, uh, we have a budget calendar that we follow. It has key milestones on it. One of them being when the departments have to submit their budget requests, along with the comprehensive list of fees, changes. And the big one for tonight is the public hearing for the manager recommended budget. Um, executive team meets with all departments, reviews their budget requests. We, uh, had a similar process this year as last year with, uh, asking departments to go back and identify mission critical projects. And that was the way that we were able to, to balance the budget. Um, our budget priorities, basically three priorities. We wanted to, uh, have a fiscal responsible budget that aligned with, uh, council priorities and the town's needs, uh, utilize strategic financial planning for the future and also invest in our employee retention development. Uh, we feel like this budget, uh, achieved those priorities. Um, so our initial departmental request, the budget was, the expenditures exceeded our revenue projections. General fund was $13.1 million out of balance. Water sewer fund was 21.8, electric fund was 3.6 million. Uh, we had, uh, 22 position requests. We only had initially 10 incorporated. Uh, so here's our 2024 operating budget, proposed budget. We took into consideration some economic considerations. Uh, the most recent CPI for April was 4.9% uh, compared to 8.3% for April 2022. Um, what's interesting there is that this is the first time inflation has been below 5% in two years. Um, so that's, uh, kind of gives you indication where inflation's headed in the right direction. Uh, the Federal Reserve is still on course trying to rein inflation to their 2% target. They've implemented 10 rate increases since March of 2022 that total 5%. They meet next month. They could do another quarter percent or they may decide to hold, hold still. Um, there's still a consensus that there's going to be some sort of recession projected to occur in late calendar '23 that could continue into 2024. So our major revenue assumptions this year is, um, level tax rate, maintaining at 60 cents per hundred dollars of valuation with a 99% collection rate. Where ad valorem taxes and sales taxes will grow. And, uh, we expect our road development revenue, building permits to decline slightly. Um, this slide here shows you where we're at with our expenditure budget. It's 45.7 million for the general fund, 42 million for the water sewer fund, 19.5 million for the electric fund, little over 107 million total. Um, here's our new positions that were recommended that included in the, the, the budget. We have four positions in the general fund and two on the water sewer fund at a total cost a little over $530,000. This slide is a pie chart that shows you where our revenues are coming from. As you can see, approximately 45% of our revenue comes from ad valorem taxes and 25% are, uh, sales tax based. Those are the two biggest sources. And the next slide shows you where we're spending those, how we're spending that money. Uh, public safety, 28%. Public services, 18%. Those are the two largest single areas where the funds are being spent at. Um, our capital improvement plan, um, if council remembers, case one was basically based upon taking the whole CIP, which is about $150.8 million. And, and that was shown, this is Davenport's analysis, it was shown that we would need approximately little over seven and three-quarter cents, uh, on alternating years beginning in 2025 to fund that. on alternating years beginning in twenty twenty-five to fund that. That, that really isn't practical. Case two is just taking the top ten projects. And that would require a little over about one point eight three cents rotating semi each subsequent fiscal year. Or you could do an upfront tax increase this year for four and a half cents and that would cover it. Case two A and Q two B are the spinoffs of case two where if we increase the tax three cents on alternating years, how much additional debt we could afford to issue to cover the projects outside of the top ten. And on case two A, that came to approximately fifteen point three million dollars. And if you issued debt in twenty twenty-five, and in case two B, if you deferred that debt issuance a year, you pick up about another one point six million or for a total of seventeen million that you would have available to fund projects outside the top ten. And this is slide here is the actual general fund C I P. It's kind of hard to, to see, but the top ten are listed and the bottom section includes all the other projects that were in the C I P for the general fund. Our utility rate recommendations, both the water and sewer funds have increases. We have a five percent increase in the electric fund and a fifteen point four percent combined increase in the water sewer fund. And just to kind of give you a comparison, last year we forecasted, projected a five percent increase for electric this year. So we're right on target with that. In the water sewer fund, we projected an eighteen point two combined increase last year. So we're a little bit below that, we're at fifteen point four. The solid waste increase is actually a dollar fifty. The budget message is correct and it shows a dollar fifty, the slide has two, but it's actually a dollar fifty to up to twenty-four dollars. There you can see the slide from the Black and Beach Rate Model where you see the recommend, recommended rate increases. Water, three percent, wastewater, twenty-five point eight, point eight for a combined total of fifteen point three, fifteen point four in twenty twenty-four. And then there's a similar side from eighteen ninety-eight who did the electric rate model with a five percent rate adjustment for twenty twenty-four. This slide here is a, is a sample, customer sample bill. And it's based upon the average customer within the town limits, town system. So you can see in the left-hand side, that's the current fiscal twenty, fiscal twenty twenty-three rates. And the right-hand side is proposed twenty twenty-four. Right now, this year is about two hundred and seventy dollars. And a proposed budget for twenty twenty-four, that's about two hundred and ninety-six dollars. So a little bit shy of twenty-six dollars a month increase or nine point six percent. Conclusions, both the enterprise funds are going to need rate increases to refund investments in the system, replace the aging infrastructure and maintain their financial health. The town works still experiencing growth and that impacts all components of our operations. We got ongoing economic uncertainty. As council has heard before, our fund balance appropriations aren't sustainable in the general fund. And our success to our long-term financial planning, that's going to give us strong financial health. Some of these next charts are like our key financial history. This chart charts a slide of our general fund fund balance, unassigned fund balances eleven point one. Our operational targets, thirty percent, so that equates to about ten point eight, which leaves a little bit less than three hundred thousand to work with. Our minimum requirement is twenty percent, so that number equates to seven point two million, which leaves about three point nine available for discretionary funding. And there's a couple of other options in there that displays various scenarios. This is our ten-year historical term for sales tax revenues. If you look at this, our sales tax revenues projected to triple from fiscal year fourteen fifteen. We were about three million dollars on fourteen fifteen. For twenty-three, twenty-four, we're right about the nine million dollar mark in our sales tax revenue. So that, that gives you indication how strong sales tax revenues have been. Our averlum tax revenue history is pretty close to how we budgeted. It's growing. We've got like, I think this year, we, like I said earlier, about a six percent growth in our averlum tax revenue. Here's a utility sales tax revenues. Those are pretty flat for the most part. And I, I think they'll, they'll continue that way into the future. Our building permit revenues, as I mentioned earlier, you can see we're projecting a decline. They're actually going to be lower than what we budgeted for twenty twenty-three. And that's carrying forward into twenty twenty-four where we're being conservative in what we're projecting based upon the, what we're currently experiencing, the given economic conditions. This is just a slide with our debt service. That spike in twenty-one, twenty-two came about because we chose to pay off some debt earlier than the normal amortization schedule. This slide is just a general fund debt to expenditures, kind of shows you that relationship between debt service and our general fund total expenditure budget. This slide is a bar chart that shows you the component percentage of total for these various categories. Salary, as you can see, salaries and benefits and operating expenses and contract services are the two largest components in our budget each year. The next slide is a similar chart, but this is by function. So you've got general government, public safety, public works, recreation, culture, debt service, general government and public safety are the two biggest expenditures by function for the town. This slide is just simply a line chart of that same previous slide. It's a ten-year history. This is very similar to the other one, but it's a five-year history. And what I like to point out in twenty-two, twenty-three, the current year budget, we did the centralization of fleet purchases and public works. So you kind of see that spike in twenty-two, twenty-three on the public works. And then in twenty twenty-three, in the proposed budget, you see that drop off. And what's happened there is we've isolated out engineering and the engineering inspections, we made them their separate department. So they used to be in public works. And now for twenty twenty-four, they're separate departments. So now they're folded in with the general government. So you kind of see how the general government is spiking up. So those are the, some organizational realignments that are contributing to that. This last slide shows you the history, ten-year history of our revenue versus expenses. As you can see, we're showing that we, we expect expenses in twenty-two, twenty-three to be higher than revenues. And in twenty-three, twenty-four, obviously, we got to have a balanced budget, so they're, they're equal. And that basically concludes the manager recommended budget. Any, any questions or?
Questions for staff? If not, I'll.
So for the water sewer fund and the electric fund, obviously the rate increases this year. That, the water sewer and the, the electric fund rate increases this year that you're proposing the five and, and the five point three. I mean, that was.
Yeah, it's electric is five percent. Get back there so I can show that for you.
My question is, when you, you came to us last year, you, you talked about, I mean, you said that this is something that we're going to have to do this year.
Right, so last year we forecast, we projected electric would be a five percent rate increase this year. And that's what is, that's what it's actually turning out to be, five percent. And on the water sewer fund, last year we projected that the combined increase for twenty twenty-four would be eighteen point seven percent. And this year actually for twenty twenty-four, it's going to be fifteen point four percent. So we're on the water sewer side, we're a little bit lower than what we projected last year for twenty twenty-four. And we're right on target with the projection for, on the electric side.
Thank you. I just wanted to just point out, I guess it's not a, it wasn't a surprise. I mean, it was something that we were expecting that you would be coming to us this year and saying this because you came to us last year and said, you said you would, this is what to expect this next budget cycle and, and here you are. And it's not, it's not a, like I said, it's not a surprise.
Yeah. Well, if you look there, we, we're showing increases as we go out into the foreseeable future on, on both, both the enterprise funds, so.
All right, this has been noted as a public hearing. Anyone wish to speak, please step forward and state your name for the record. All right, no one wishing to speak, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Mackay, thank you for the update on the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget. All right, moving down to new business, the Operations Center improvements, capital project budget ordinance.
County Mayor Robert Mackay, again, tonight we're asking council to approve a capital project budget ordinance for improvements at the Operations Center. These items are currently budgeted in their respective funds budget. We're just going to be transferring those monies over to a capital project fund. And it's basically a forty, thirty, thirty split, forty percent general fund, thirty percent water sewer, thirty percent electric. So this would be a governmental capital project fund and we'll just transfer the funds from respective enterprise fund to cover their share of the, the cost.
Cool. Any questions or comments, Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Mayor, move, we approve adoption of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh five dash oh two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Up next is the audit contract for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, we have the audit contract proposal from Anderson Smith and White. The, there's only a maximum five hundred dollar increase compared to last year. Anderson Smith and White had their peer review in twenty twenty-two. They had a pass. That's the highest score grade you can get from your peer review. The expectation for next year is in late January, early February. We'll solicit an R F P for an audit services contract and we'll see how that comes back in terms of make a recommendation whether we change auditors or we keep the same auditor, we'll just have to wait for that. But for twenty twenty-three, we're staying pat with the, the existing audit, audit company.
All right, questions or comments for staff? Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, move, we approve the audit contract.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the audit contract. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Town Manager Staff Reports.
Uh, yes, sir. In, in light of where we're at with the meeting, I'll try to be brief here. Two things real quick. Given Mr. Barbie's announcement at the last meeting, we have gone ahead and set Deputy Chief something as the interim town, excuse me, the interim Fire Chief, as well as Stacy Turner will be stepping up from the Battalion Chief to be the interim deputy so that they have a clear chain of command over the next several months. H R has already begun the input sessions with the Fire Department. So that'll take place over the next few weeks so that we can develop the profile for the advertisement for, for our next leader of the Fire Department. So more to come on that. Second thing though, we do have a firm date now for the celebration for Mr. Barbie's time as the Fire Chief. That will be June twenty-second, starting at two o'clock, there'll be a program here at the Town Hall from two to four, and then following that from four o'clock to five, five-thirty, there will be an opportunity for the public or others as well to come just drop by and thank Chief Barbie for his service. So I want to get that date on everybody's calendar, June twenty-second from two to about five-thirty. Just depending, formal program from two to four, four to five-thirty is more of a floating thing. So just want to get that on the radar. That's it.
Awesome. Town Charny? Town Clerk?
No report.
Other staff? Uh, informal discussion and public comment? Anyone wish to speak? If not, I'll turn it over to council for comments. Mr. Sam.
Real fast, um, so I just really want to take the time to thank the Clayton, the, the Police Department, the Fire Department on a outstanding event Saturday. Really, really had a huge turnout with the community and it was a really good event. Also want to take the time to thank those I have to, T N T Creative Group, Chefella's, Coca-Cola, Parks and Rec, the Matt especially who stayed and did the, the whole scoreboard and everything like that. But it was a huge come together with all the community and I hope that we can continue to do some things like that in the future.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else? All right, if not, I will entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss economic development.
Sorry, I was gonna say, Mr. Mayor, in the light of the time, that was going to be an update only, so I'll leave it up to you all if you want to have that tonight or push that to another time.
Okay, we'll do it next go around.
We'll do it next go around.
Yeah. All right. Anything else to come before this board? If not, thank you, everybody. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Motion carries.